37th, 2013 County Commissioner Meeting to Order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by HR Director Nick Strout.
Did you hear that?
Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. And to start with, I would pronounce that the Item 14, Amendments to the County Air Quality Ordinance, has been removed from the agenda. Any other changes that you wish to make?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Holly, what about the Pennington County Housing? What did they want to do with theirs?
We're going to proceed forward.
Okay.
Anyone have any changes they wish to make, other than the removal of Item 14? Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Holly?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hanny is your Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today, I've placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 16, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amounts of $2,127,014.07. Approval of the Tax Increment Finance Committee assignment for Commissioner Ron Buscrew. To set and approve the civil township bonds for treasurer and clerks as presented by the auditor. To schedule a public hearing on May 21, 2013, for the general fund supplement hearing SP-13-010 to supplement the Mountain Pine Beetle budget. To approve the second quarter South Dakota Emergency Management State and Local Agreement as submitted by the Emergency Management Department. And finally, to approve the South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for Weed Spraying Services as submitted by the Weed and Pest Director.
Does anyone wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Anyone in the public? If not, Chair would entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is Item 12, and this is a very special occasion. We'll ask Sheriff Tom to open the ceremony.
Good morning. Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. We heard it's going to be an unruly meeting, so we brought lots of backup today, so hopefully we don't need all of them.
[laughing]
Actually, I have up here with me is Willie Welchel. He's our Chief Deputy over the Corrections. And Joe Gutierrez, who runs the Juvenile Services Center. And Jim Roenhorst as the jail commander. And we asked a number of our correctional staff to come over today. The commission signed a proclamation in recognition of Corrections Week. Most people don't realize here in Pennington County, we house about 600, 625 people a day between our four facilities. And oftentimes, it's a very high-needs population with medical and dental and mental health issues. And so, we deal with that on a daily basis. And we deal with people from disorderly conduct to death row. So, it's a wide variety of people that we deal with in our facilities. Sometimes, we have people that are in our maximum unit that are literally locked down 23 hours a day because they're so dangerous and it takes two correctional officers to escort them when they're let out of their cells. So, it's not always just the local town drunk like Andy of Mayberry that comes and checks themselves in, checks themselves out. We have a very high-needs population. It's a service we provide in the community. And we thank our staff for what they do every day and appreciate the commission recognizing them for Corrections Week. And Commander Roenhorst is going to introduce somebody from the jail that's going to read the actual proclamation.
Thank you, Sheriff. I just want to say, it is absolutely a privilege to be the commander of the Pennington County Jail. It is a very complicated place, but it's a great, great staff that do the job for me. I just show up for work most of the time and let them take care of everything. So, in recognition of them, I would like Correctional Officer Craig Groseth from the Pennington County Jail to read the proclamation. He's our classification officer and sorts all the inmates into the right slots in the jail. Craig.
Thank you. Whereas, May 6 through May 12, 2013 will be celebrated across the United States as National Corrections Week. And whereas the corrections profession is one of the most challenging professions one can pursue, it is also one of the most noble. Correction staff keep our citizens and our communities safe, not simply by securing jails and juvenile detention facilities and the offenders confined therein. Correctional's employees serve admirably throughout the Pennington County Jail and Juvenile Services Center as custody officers, counselors, teachers, chaplains, healthcare professionals, support staff, supervisors, and commanders. They are among the most capable, committed, patient, and persistent public servants in our nation. And whereas few truly understand the difficulties and challenges these correction professionals face daily, often at personal risk, they are given those who have engaged in dangerous and addictive behaviors, along with the responsibility to reform and rehabilitate. They are given society's illiterate and unskilled and the task to educate. They are given those who lack medical care or who are in poor health and must help them make well, help make them well. They are given the mentally ill and the responsibility to diagnose, treat, and protect. Correction staff are positioned to offer offenders a better example and a new path. These staff do so with limited resources and often with little awareness or acknowledgement from those outside the field of corrections. Yet, correctional employees continue to rise to the challenge time and again. And whereas it is appropriate, we honor the correction staff in our Pennington County correctional facilities for their invaluable contributions to our society. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, County of Pennington, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through May 12, 2013, as Pennington County Corrections Week. And encourage the citizens of Pennington County to share in acknowledging the outstanding job that Pennington County correction staff perform on a daily basis in serving the entire community. Date of the 16th day of April, 2013, Board of County Commissioners of Pennington County. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to authorize the signature on this proclamation? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do you need a third, fourth, and a fifth on that?
Well, I think so, but Commissioner Buscrew has.
Yeah, I have to really thank our corrections officers, too. We, I don't think the average citizen understands the danger that these people are in. Once in a while, we'll read that someone got beat up in the prison or someone got killed in the prison, which we've had. What they don't understand is most of those, all of those people originally came through a county jail somewhere. And so, these people deal with those same gangsters and they do owe, we do owe them a round of applause for their good job. But they do. Thank you.
Thank you.[544.82][544.82][applause] We do need to vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Sheriff Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Each and every one of you and those of you who weren't able to be here. You're very commended. Next item is Item 13, a proposed shared FTE for the Commission Office and Human Resources. Commissioner Troutman.
Well, we talked about this position a few months ago. And since then, I've had some time to think about it and look into it a little more. And I would like to just bring it up again today. Recently, we've had some interesting department head meetings where we have talked about whether department head meetings are worth it. And we've decided that it is, but that something we need to do is provide training. Well, Nick is our training person for Human Resources and how to handle employees and so on. And that's what we hired him for, in many ways. And it's also something we have not been able to really get going. And our staff is asking for that. So, that's sort of got me to thinking about that position that Holly and Nick requested earlier this year. I also got to realizing neither Nick or Holly have any backup. When they're gone, they are gone. We have no one to step in and take care of their offices. And especially for Holly, I think the commission should have someone there when Holly needs to be gone for a meeting or training or whatever. We need to have somebody in that office because our constituency is coming in with questions and concerns, and we should have someone there to receive them. And when Holly can't be there, we don't have. Holly also was hired to do more than mail, but every afternoon, she has to cut back with what she's doing and she starts the mail. And another thing that has been going around in my mind about these two positions and having some help for them, you know, as we start into this budget cycle, this is kind of, this is a little different year for me as I look forward for Pennington County. Because it's really getting close to the time when many of those department heads who have been considering retiring, that's coming very close in the next two years. And I think that we, as commissioners, need to make sure we have a really good plan for transition. It's not only going to be something that we deal with financially because at times, we're going to have basically two department heads in one department, but it is something that we need to carefully plan. And we, as commissioners, are not going to be able to go around and develop that plan of when people are leaving, how soon we need to advertise for their job replacements, how we're going to do that. We need to review job descriptions. There's a great deal that needs to happen this next two years as many of our department heads begin to retire. And I think that that is a critical thing that we need, and these two are looking at, I haven't talked to them about it yet, but that's my thing, is that we need to continue to provide really good leadership in our department heads. And the people that are going to have to help us through this are Nick and Holly. And so, I want to bring this up again. I asked them to go through this with me. I think that the different kinds of duties that they've identified, the job description is a great start, as any new position you change as you go along. I know that we, as a commission, have not wanted to, we've tried to minimize hiring new positions, but I think that in this case, we need to seriously consider it, and I think we need to do it before the end of the year. So, we've looked at some funding. Really, the source for the funding would, at this point, for the remainder of 2013, come from the Commissioners Contingency Fund. So, I would stand for any questions. I'm sure Holly and Nick would as well.
Any questions by the commission? Nick? Wait.
I was just standing for questions.[885.12][885.12][laughing]
Nancy, it looks like the commission budget has turned money back every year for the last five years. Is it, and maybe this is a question for Holly, does it look like we're going to have surplus money again for 2013?
Yes, sir. It looks like we're on track for saying for 2012.
Okay, so it won't have to come from contingency. It would come out of the current budgets. And I don't know if Nick ever turns any money back or not, but that's, if we were going to do this, that's the direction I'd like to see it go, is to try to use your current budgets to fund this for the balance of the year.
That is our ultimate goal, is to try and pull, I mean, to return it at least out of the commissioner's budget. Nick turns back a small amount every year. He has a small budget. Anyway, but last absolute case scenario is to go for the contingency.
Then the other question I have, I guess, is you've put together the cost, and I assume that's just salary cost that you've got in there at the $20,000?
No, salary and any possible elected benefits that they would choose.
What about, I don't know where you're going to office this person? Is there other?
The only thing is to rearrange the commission office a little bit. I do have a spare computer that we would like to utilize through the end of this year. So, we don't foresee any additional office equipment needs at all.
Desk and so on will be?
We're going to go look through surplus, see if we can find one somewhere.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, well, I disagree initially that our contingency fund is not meant to hire people to do tasks that aren't necessary, immediately necessary, anyway. I guess if we have excess money in our account, it's not excess because it goes back into next year's budget process. So, you know, we don't ever have excess money. So, that's.
Any other comments? I would just comment that in the office back here, whether it's the phone ringing, the mail needing to be sorted, people going back and forth through for court or planning and zoning, commission meetings, things of that kind, the amount of detail that's involved and on Holly's plate in particular is something that certainly requires someone with good mental agility in order to remember which is where. And not too long ago, circumstances were such that Holly couldn't be here. And in my contact with the situation, the answering the phone and the directing people who have inquiries was just by the good graces of someone else in another department. And I think in general, that's a very fragile situation and that we do indeed need to move forward on this. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an FTE to be jointly shared between the commission office and the human resources office, with the funding to come from the commission and the HR budget, and as a last resort, the contingency fund.
Your second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I will once again say it should not come from the contingency fund. That's not what that fund is for, to hire people. I'm sorry.
And?
I'm voting against it.
That is the last resort, though.
Well, yeah. Usually, the last resort is where we end up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I can remember a few years ago, the Pennington County Commission, which I happen to be one of, hired an additional office manager and a person to be in the office. And after I went out of the commission for that four years, that individual was released from his job, and we wound up with only one individual in the office. And when I came on, this was the last time, two years ago, I was chairman, I asked the office people if they needed help in that office, and I was told no. And so, now we do. And I'm kind of wondering where all of the work came from and what we're going to do by this list of what the support staff would be doing. I'm wondering what else is going to be done in the office for the second individual. So, I guess that's the problem I have. We're spending the taxpayer's money, and I'm a little leery about doing that. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yes, as far as the mail, the mail is increasing on a daily basis for her with all of the mailbox people and all the people that are licensing from out of state. And I haven't been able to contact the state to get a direct answer, but next year, starting in January, if they decide to do license plates at that time, there is no way one person can handle the commission office and that mailing office also. Because she's going to get four to five boxes of mail a day, just in license plates. And that can range anywhere from 250 to 300 plates that she's going to have to handle.
And Pennington County gets a share of those license plate fees, right?
Yes, we collect the postage back. We charge for it, and then we give it back.
Doesn't the highway department get some of that?
Not the postage. They get everything else, but they don't get the postage.
So, those people that are registering their vehicles from out of state in Pennington County, Pennington County is receiving some funds from that.
The postage money. That's correct.
And the highway money.
Yes, that's correct.
And if that happens, a part-time person to help in the mailroom would be sufficient to do the mail.
That's not my call. That's the commissioner's call.
Any other discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is the Tax Increment Financing District 65. This is an informational item. And Patsy, if you'll introduce yourself and your title, and we'll go from there.
Good morning. Patsy Horton. I work with the Community Planning and Development Services. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager. And you had asked some questions about Tax Increment District 65, which is on Minnesota Street, and I think more particularly because the applicant has come forward with some additional, with a new tax increment district generally in the same area. We're going to wait just a second here. So, first thing we're going to talk about is what really was approved back in 2007 when the city council approved the project plan for Tax Increment 65. On this screen, you'll see what the proposed improvements were going to be. One of the reasons identified in the project plan that the council moved forward is there, at the time, there was a lack of connectivity from Elk's Country Estates and Plum Creek over to Elkvale Road when Elkvale Road was constructed. They've identified some improvements as the storm sewer connection, and you can see that red line up on the top, the detention pond, there are some grading issues that they had to address, and then the construction of Minnesota Street, along with burying the power lines under the road. And then, over on the east side, there was an irrigation pipe that they were going to bury, and then also another regional detention pond. In 2007, when the project plan was approved, there were two developers. The total cost for those two developers, including $23 million in interest, was $33,956. The actual capital improvements identified were $8.6 million. That's the total of, you know, the capital cost that you see. One of the questions that you also had was the existing impact on the taxing entities. And to date, for 2012, I identified the proposal was at least $1.8 million at the end of 2012. That comes out to $323,000 for the county with that estimate. This is a spreadsheet that I got from our city finance office on what was actually collected the last two years. The first couple of years, it was about $18,000. The next two years was about $43,000. And that is only 57% because Developer One, the agreements between the two developers, Developer One paid, was going to receive 57.5%. Actually, when you look at the total that has been collected so far, there's been $31,642 in taxes collected. So, the next thing you were asking about is what's really happened so far with Tax Increment 65? And I know you can't really see it, but this is Developer One's certified costs that they've submitted and actually received payment for. To date, there's been $4.9 million paid back to the developer, and we estimate another one point, little less, little more than $1 million yet to be requested for Developer
And that was to do those things that you talked about earlier, putting the road in?
Right. And I'm going to get to that map on what they actually accomplished.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I just kind of want to go over what was actually identified in the project plan, and then I'll show you what you requested. So, in the project plan, they had estimated that Developer One was going to pay out their costs by December 2026. And Developer Two was estimated to pay out in, also, December 2026. And so, what I've done with this, as of today, I redid their increment projections based on what's happened through 2012. There have been 62 new houses out there. There was an apartment building permit issued in March of this year for $15 million. And so, with that, and the increment that they, or the projections that they've come up with, you know, through, I don't know, this goes through 2028, but I see that they're going to pay off this particular portion of Developer One improvements generally in 2021. So, that's a five-year improvement. And this just identifies the new amortization schedule with the five-year payout, or with the payout five years earlier. And so, then what we have here is a map of the existing tax increment District 65 boundary, which is in green. The new proposal is the entire hatched area. And when there are overlapping districts, you can't have the same exact boundary. So, what the developer has proposed this time is to extend it over to Marlin Drive, a little past Marlin Drive, to the west, a little bit across the Elkvale Road. And most all of that property on the north side of Elkvale belongs to what was considered Developer One. Since this tax increment district was approved, Developer One has bought out Developer Two, so now we only have one developer. And what you'll see here is the new improvements that have not actually been constructed yet. This is the proposal for '74. So, everything on the west side of that yellow line, Minnesota Street, the storm detention pond, the storm channel, Minnesota Street, burying the power lines, the grading, all of those things have been completed with the first phase that we had seen in those project costs. Does that make sense? So, everything east of that, or west of that yellow line, has been completed. So, now what they are proposing is to complete Minnesota Street, to complete the irrigation pipe, to... pipe, to bury the power lines underground, and to construct the regional drainage pond.
I thought that was in the original.
It was, but what happened is Developer Two didn't get, they didn't actually get any of these project costs under construction within that five-year timeframe, and so they can't, they can only certify the costs that have actually been under contract and completed. So because they did not get that done, they have requested the new district.
So why did, if they already had it in the first TIF, why did they need a second TIF to finish it?
Because they didn't get the second half under contract within that time, five-year timeframe.
Did they spend the money?
No. And so this is an estimate of the project costs, and I know you can't really see it, but that is capital costs of $3.355 million, and that includes Minnesota Street, the regional drainage, the irrigation pipe, burying the power line, some professional costs, and then some contingency. And this is the new projection based on when tax increment District 65 will pay off. So you see, I haven't included any proposed increment until 2022, which is six months after 65 pays. And this is just the amortization schedule that shows that this particular district is estimated to pay out in 2027. And so then my last sheet that I have here is the impact on the taxing entities that you had requested. And with this new proposal from 2022 through 2032, that's an $8.5 million tax impact. The county's impact is $2.5 million. And that is through 2032, in case there's some lag on those construction permits. And so I'm going to go back to the very first picture that showed where all of the improvements were located for 65, so that we can talk about that for just a second.
So did we, did we get a hard copy of that?
So what you see on this map, generally, there's a red line in between, you know, that separates the yellow line. Everything on the left of that line, which is west, those improvements were actually constructed. The improvements identified on the left were not constructed. They did not get them under contract, which means that they lose the ability...
Okay, the ones that they did get done, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just try to get this straight in my head, because I'm a little bit confused. The ones, the portion of it that they did get completed, what was the cost of that?
That is...
And we've got a whole bunch of papers here, but I've been a hard time trying to figure out, find the same paper in my...
Right, I added some things from the planning commission, because you had requested some specific information. Developer One estimated costs in 65 were $5.958760. So they had not quite $6 million identified for project costs. To date, they've spent $4.9 million.
Okay.
They have also spent 1.4, not quite 1.1 million, but they have not certified the 1.1 million yet.
All of that is in the first phase?
Correct.
So they originally estimated it to be 5.9, and now we're up to five, or about 6 million?
Well, they...
And they didn't get it all done?
No. Close, you're close. This was the original estimate for both Developer One and Developer Two.
I just wanted to talk about Developer One, because isn't that which covered under the original TIF for that area out there?
No, Developer One and Two...
We're in on the first...
We're in on the first one.
Okay.
Developer One, you know, throughout the five years, bought out Developer Two. They did not get Developer Two project moving forward.
In the first TIF, the first TIF that was put into play, that total cost, that TIF was supposed to be 5.9 million plus?
No, it was supposed to be, including interest, it was supposed to be 33.9 million.
Okay, and how much of that have we then now committed before we start the second TIF?
The 5.9 million for Developer One.
And we've committed that whole 5.9 million?
Yes.
All right.
And so when we talk about the 4.9 that's been turned in and the 1.1 that has not, I mean, that's over 6 million. So they're just paid up to the 5958760? I mean, they're just paid up to that amount, or are they actually paid for what they turn in even though it's more?
They will only be paid for the amount on this particular spreadsheet.
Do I have that spreadsheet?
No, but I can email it to you.
Okay.
We may be a little acid-dumb questions if we have, you know, I wasn't really sure.
These are all in here.
To go back to my question, then, what we're, why don't you tell me what that is, because I sort of can't read it. So what you're saying is that... The first and second developer in the first phase in the first TIF will be paid how much?
No more than 5.958 million. Plus interest.
All right, so then we move on to the second TIF to finish the first TIF plus add to the projects, is that right? Is it going to add, is it going to add more work, or are we still staying at the 33.9 million?
No, no, the 33.9 million actually disappears and drops down to the 5.9 million, which is the only amount that they can request back on 65.
Okay.
For project, for actual capital costs.
All right, and then, so what is, what's the second TIF?
The second TIF project costs are going to be 3.355 million. Plus interest.
Okay.
So, you know, I know that it's kind of hard, but, you know, from the first one, when they request in construction costs of 8.6 million, you know, you take off, it's about the same, only we're paying a lot less interest for this particular section of Minnesota Street and associated improvements. Does that make sense?
So when this, when this project is completed and you've figured out what the interest is going to be on that, what's the total amount that's going to be paid back?
For both?
For both of them, yeah.
For both?
The 5.9, the 3.3, plus interest.
You know, give me a second, I think I can calculate that here with my sheets. I just have to get the right one here. So with the interest, with the principal and interest on 65, we'll pay 3.2 million, almost 3.3 million. And with 74, if it's approved, we would pay interest 3.1 million.
So the 3.3 that you talked about was the interest that's going to be on that, 5.9 million?
No, the 3.3 is the project costs. So you have, we'll go 3.4 because it's easier to add, and then 3.1 for interest, so we're paying about 6.5 for 65, for tax increment 74, excuse me.
For 65?
No, I'm sorry, it was 74.
For 74, so what's 65 then?
65 is... About 9.2.
Okay.
So total, we're paying 15.7.
15.7.
Instead of 33.
Okay, and you said, you said that's going to get paid off by 2000?
The last one is 2027.
2027.
And that's anticipated, you know, based on the construction activity that they've projected.
Sure, and you mentioned that Pennington County's portion of those taxes that are going to pay that off was $2 million?
Well, for 60, or for 74, I estimated about 2.5 through 2032. And I went a little longer than the 27, just in case, you know, the construction didn't actually pan out. I went a full 20 years on the estimated costs for 74.
And the schools are going to pay a portion?
Schools have no impact. There's no impact.
We get the taxes from it.
There's no reduction in their taxes, there's no...
But we still have to have, we still have to find a way to pay it.
Next year, they're re-leveed against the rest of the property owner.
Against the rest of the, but the tax that that property would have normally paid towards schools is going to pay this TIF off, isn't that correct?
No, not for schools. There's no impact to the school taxes whatsoever for that increment, for the increment that's potentially generated.
Can we please get it? We have a different understanding.
That's basically incorrect. The schools don't lose the money.
No.
Because we re-levee what they've lost one year the next.
Sure, but the money that that property would have normally paid to the schools is going to pay this TIF off.
Yes, and we re-levee it against that school district for it to collect the next year.
I understand the rest of us taxpayers are picking up that difference.
Just, just the school district that we levied against in that one, which is Rapid City.
Rapid City, where most of the people are living.
Which most of the people.
And, and Pennington County, their portion of those taxes obviously goes to pay the TIF.
Yes, and if it's a $15 million project, our share is more than 2 million.
Right, I would agree with you. And then, and then the city's property tax that they would have collect goes to pay for it.
Yes.
But, 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 just so the public understands, the city gets to collect their building permits, they get to collect the sales tax on all of pieces of things that are going in out there, the state gets excise tax. Is there any taxes that the county gets back?
No.
This is why I think this is a poor deal for Pennington County.
Okay, Patsy, we're kind of putting you on the spot, I know.
And we don't mean to.
You're fine, and I am not the TIF expert, I just want you to know, I am not.
I do have a question, if I may, Lindell. If you go back to the map where you're changing it from one to the other, and you said where you were adding property, that one, you said a TIF can't have the same boundaries?
State law, state law will not allow you to have the same exact boundary for two TIFs. You can overlap, but the boundary has to be different.
But because...
To the legislators, that's stupid, but, so you're adding this property in the gray for services, clear over here in the green down spout, are they, are they in the gray area benefiting from this improvement?
I do not believe so, but I didn't, keep in mind, I did not come up with this boundary.
No, I'm just asking the generic question.
Yes.
That you're adding property to a place that is not, because state law says you have to, which why they can't be the same is just ridiculous, that aren't going to get the service.
Well, and if you look at some of the restructuring that's been going on in recent TIFs in the area, what's happened is that they're really picking, they're creating those boundaries based on the kind of tax collection that is coming in on those properties.
Or potential.
So they will cherry pick the properties that have more tax amounts coming in, so that they pay the TIF off quicker than if they are actually just creating a boundary that actually fits the state law.
That benefits from the improvement, that's the original...
And that's not your fault, that's how the developers are doing it.
Yep, and we get stuck paying the bill.
I have a question too. What's been developed out there, mainly single-family residences?
Exactly, with the exception of that new apartment building that was issued, the permit was issued.
My issue is this, that, and it's been a while since I've done any research, but actually, on single-family residences, we lose money on the taxes. The only thing that really pays the foot in bill is industry and commercial. We lose money on, on single-family residents, and yet we pay the developer to go develop more of them so we can lose more money. It doesn't make any sense to me. That's my great.
And Mr. Chair, we could add just one thing in there, as long as we're talking about commercial and single-family residence, and Ag only pays 4% of the taxes in Pennington County, so doesn't amount to much.
So, just so I get it straight in my head, the gray area that you've got in there, and I understand that you needed to, that the developer needed to add that, is there any work going to be done out in that area?
They actually have projected, right adjacent to Minnesota Street, a couple retail businesses, and I know that the area over, you know, on the farthest west side south of Elkvale, there's been a lot of development in that area. You know, the roads are already in, the infrastructure's there, so, you know, some industrial uses could come in sooner rather than later.
But there isn't any, with this TIF, there's no infrastructure work being done in that area?
Correct, it's only from that portion of Minnesota east. And one more thing I'd like to add, unfortunately, the two individuals that knew the most about tax increment districts no longer work for the department, so I'm it.
You get to be rookie, huh?
Yes.
Don't shoot the messenger, is that what you're saying?
We don't mean to.
I appreciate you coming, Patsy, and I hope we didn't make you too uncomfortable, but I think this illustrates the need for Pennington County to become more focused on these kinds of things. And also, from my experience as the one person from the county who has participated up to now, the involvement of the county in the whole process needs to start earlier and be more detailed. Things like the interest rate can be up to 9%, but there's no process for requiring that the interest rate be bid on. Just a letter of commitment by lending institutions saying, we'll do this for this much. Things like that need to be tweaked. But just to keep you on your toes, I have in my hand a notice of intent to create boundaries for a tax increment district from Box Elder. As of May 13th, they will, they will hold a hearing, so this is a subject we need to gear up on. And what's next on this particular one, Patsy, do you know?
Planning Commission considers it on Thursday morning, 7:00 AM. You're all welcome to come in and express your viewpoints. Additionally, there's been some discussion about changing the guidelines that Rapid City currently has, and with input from the new commissioner, I'm sure that we'll, we'll have some additional discussions. Now that you have appointed somebody, I'll schedule a TIF committee to look at some additional changes to those. There's been a lot of discussion on, you know, potentially maybe focusing more of the districts in downtown, the core agency where, you know, we might need some redevelopment. So there's, there's a lot of things coming forward, but we're just not there yet, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make just a couple of comments? I, I kind of have visited with some of the city council, and definitely, there is not a really good understanding, just as we have explained today, and you were not aware of how that affects the county. I think there needs to be some education somehow that, that explains what really happens with money for, the taxes that come... with money for, that come, the taxes that come in to pay scope for school districts and so on, because I don't believe that's truly understood. The other thing that I think is important is that, okay, this might be a couple million, you think, to affect us, but I think what we really need to do, because we have an auditor who says, oh, no, that's a lot more money than what you're, we're getting in a projection from the city, maybe there needs to be better connections with the county on what it really is going to do to, to the taxation that we deal with. And, um, I, that hasn't been happening, and I think that's a real critical point, because I, I guess maybe I have enough faith in the fact that if people really understood in the city level, that it might make a different decision. It certainly would, um, certainly not having that information, they have no way of even entertaining different decisions. And I think they need to understand, because every year, we get a report when we start our budgeting of how many millions, and it's many, many, that we do not have access to, because that funding is going towards TIFs, and it greatly affects the county. And I don't think the city knows those figures and should know them. So my, I believe that there needs to be a better sharing of, of that kind of information from the county. We, we need to take that initiative.
Well, Commissioner Troutman, I would, I would say that they probably don't want to know the truth, because if they did, the public would start realizing what's going on with these TIFs.
I, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I would agree. It, it, you're really being optimistic there. I, I've been down that road to the legislature, to the city council, and it's a bumpy, rough road.
But those figures need to be there.
Well, just, just for my part, I guess, when we, when we go to our budget hearings later this year, any economic development funds that are in our budget, I think, need to come out, because we're already contributing more than the city of Rapid City is contributing for economic development in, in this community.
Okay, Patsy, we're going to let you go unless you have any parting words that you'd like to offer.
I will be happy to leave this PowerPoint, well, it's a PDF file, so that Holly can give you guys copies.
And Patsy, you'll, you'll be happy to know that I'm the second member of the TIF committee.
Yes, yes, and you do have an expert on staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, um, let's see. Next is items from the chair, and in that respect, I've, I've already shared with you the Box Elder, um, intent to pursue a TIF. Let's see, did you have something, Julie? Okay, um, there's a lady here, are, are you the lady that's concerned about the streets out in Valley View?
Yes.
Okay, um, I have, if you want to come forward and, and just express your concern, because this ties into the chair's deal, say your name and tell us what your concerns are.
I'm Carolyn H, and I live on Pennington, Pennington Street, on, um- I'm on twelve seventy-nine, and we're in that area that's considered a no man's land, and neither the city, well, we don't belong in the city, we pay county taxes and we pay a road tax, and, uh, nobody is maintaining that street, and we have, um, a great deal of traffic on that road, uh, construction traffic, all the traffic from the schools, just hundreds and hundreds of cars a day go by there, and the street is breaking up, and, uh, it's, it's a major problem. Um, I feel that, and we were told that it was supposed to have been, um, the, the citizens, the people that live in the area were supposed to be, be paying for the road because of, uh, the way the val, the developer didn't, uh, plan for either the city or the county to, um, maintain it, and, uh, so we're in a bad situation there. And I'm asking the county to consider taking in that area, because the rest of Pennington Street is on the county, um, that hot road system.
Okay, thank you, um, the, the option, the reason I, I invited you to make your remarks now is because, as I see it, within the three-mile limit which you are in, if plating is done under the direction of the city growth department, that any, any planned unit development should be taken into the city at the time, before they ever get developed, so that these kinds of things do not occur, so that you, people like you don't end up in no man's land. Heinie has spent many hours, our highway superintendent, trying to figure out how to deal with this problem. And so what your concern is, the circumstances that exist there, I, I would offer the commission, uh, the thought that we need to establish some kind of interface between city and county, planning and zoning, growth development, so that these kinds of things do not happen. And, um, unless the commission decides otherwise, uh, one way or another, we will work on the, at the business of trying to improve your situation. Now, there are things like forming a road district, a homeowners' association, things of that kind, that are tools, but at this point in time, until we get the folks in your neighborhood all together to think in terms of solutions, um, we can't commit today to any specific thing, but your problem is, is well noted, and, uh, we'll work on it. Does that, that help?
We would appreciate that, because we do feel we're paying county taxes, we're also paying a road tax, and with all the traffic on that road, we shouldn't have to pay for others using that road. And, uh, and it, it's just breaking up, because there's just too much traffic on it.
That's very unfortunate, but, uh, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Does any commissioner have any comments that they'd like to make?
So, just so, um, so I understand what you had said there, you, you're saying that any planned unit development that, that's in that three-mile area, the city's, once the city is supposed to annex them?
Either that or, or make arrangements for, uh, the, the right things. Supposedly, um, in, in that, the area that this lady lives in, there was to be a homeowners' association or a road district formed before the contractor left the area and turned over the maintenance of the streets. That was not done, and so they were left sort of hanging there. And it's a circumstance that's unfortunate, and, um, I don't think government, whether city or county, can turn their back on that sort of thing. It's, it's something we need to work at. Mr. Chair? Heinie?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Who was the contractor, do you know?
I have it on a piece of paper, but I can't tell you right at the moment.
It was an LLC that, a corporation that formed, and then after it was built, they dissolved.
And who, who was the members of the LLC, do you know?
Doyle S.D.s.
Okay.
Just, Lindell said something about tools, and there is a new tool in the toolbox that takes effect July first. Now, I haven't researched it, but there was a change in the law that the legislatures passed that allows the county commissioners to designate a road district, and then, uh, but it can only be, it can't be any more than three miles in this road district, and then you can set a levy on those properties to pay, the, the unorganized road would go away, and then you'd set a special levy for that road district. And I believe, I haven't researched it, I read the law, and, and I've talked to a couple of other superintendents, and it sounds interesting, but I haven't followed through. Uh, Jay would have to look at it, and then I don't know how it would impact the general fund if that special levy for that road district, if you established it, if it adds into your general fund and, and, or can that add to that levy? I don't know, that's questions that all need to be answered. But there is a new law that'd take effect July first that gives you one more tool to look at, and I don't know if you'd want to pursue that or not, so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. It was kind of designed for townships to generate more funds for township roads, but being or an unorganized territory, uh, it allows the, the county commissioners to do it too, so something to, if you run a research, it'd be something new. Uh, how it'd work, for sure, the bottom line, I don't know, but I thought I'd offer that to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that completes my comments. Um, item seventeen, the fiscal year twenty fourteen Pennington County budget discussion. Um, do we have any thoughts we want to offer on that? We do have our original motion, um, of last meeting. Two point one percent COLA, one percent merit, five percent healthcare premium, freeze the levy on the twenty thirteen level. Anyone want to comment on that?
Well, are we, just, Mr. Chair, how are we doing, um, schedule-wise? Are we doing fine on that, Holly? We're gonna, or has, I know we had to change hearing dates, is there any other changes in the schedule?
The one that I know of is there is a department head work session scheduled for tomorrow afternoon that we're going to combine with department head meeting, that I believe Julie is going to present the provisional numbers as they stand right now, which should be the same numbers that come to you guys for board commissioners to consider during budget year.
Okay.
So I think it's just an informational get-together for department heads to see where the numbers are following together.
Okay.
And, Holly, you commented sometime last week about the, the need to change the budget hearing dates, has that been firmed up?
Yes, sir. Um, the budget hearing dates were changed from our original schedule of June eleventh and twelfth. They've now been moved back to the nineteenth and twentieth, um, so that we have a full board of commissioners to hear it. I've gave two department heads and lost one, so we'll have one department head that will need to hear, I'm, I'm just going to try and work it on the sixth during our budget, our regular commission meeting, but other than that, I haven't had anybody contact me with complex.
When, um, when, when will we, uh, receive copies of the proposed budgets?
I need to get with Julie to see when she's going to get them finalized, um, hopefully within the next two weeks. You guys will have them in plenty of time before, you know, at least by the provisional, I believe it's going to be presented to you guys the first meeting, on the sixth, so you'll have them before that.
Thank you.
At least that's according to what our schedule was set.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? If not-
I'm just going to say, I appreciate Holly trying to keep us all in order, because we really need that.
That's, uh, certainly a blessing. Item number eighteen, the second reading and public hearing of ordinance six thirty-six. Jay, are you the one who will address that, or?
Yes.
I think Jay did an okay job of, uh, explaining it last, uh, meeting, so I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance six three six, an ordinance prohibiting disorderly conduct.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve at the second reading, ordinance six thirty-six, an ordinance prohibiting disorderly conduct. Is there any discussion?
My name is Bruce Meister, and, uh, I just found out about this deal here, and I was kind of curious about, um, what you're, what you're proposing here. Um, I don't know, the, I haven't, I don't come down here to see you folks very often.
You're retired, aren't you?
I'm retired, but, uh, your, your security gate out here, uh, I have a great big problem with that. This right here is my belt. I have to remove my belt, come in. Now, this right here in my hand is a weapon. You guys agree that this could be a weapon? It's not on my belt, it's not around my waist, because I have a problem with my shoulder, so once I take it off, I can't get it back on. But that's, that's one reason I, that I don't come down here to see you. You know, now, if, if, uh, we had these county commissioner meetings in, in someplace where I could come in like a normal person, instead of like a convict, uh, you know, I'd be glad to come down and, and, uh, sit in the audience and visit and stuff like that, but, um, anyway, uh, I, the, the times that I've been down here, I don't believe that I have ever witnessed fighting violent or threatening behavior necessarily, or unreasonable noise, other than what I call unreasonable noise is when you guys are talking, and the person in the audience is talking, and I can't listen to both people at the same time. You know, I, I, in that same way with radio shows, when they get two people on there arguing back and forth, and they're trying to overtalk each other, uh, I turn a damn station off. And, um, you know, that's the only unreasonable noise that I recall. Um, I, I, I just, you know, there's, uh, I, I think that there's a law on the books that covers most all this stuff already, and I don't, I don't understand the reason for this extra layer of, of, uh, law that you guys are trying to put in place.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you, Mr. Meister, that, that was my original thought too, and, and we own other property than this room, so it, it was really designed for our, um, detox facility. And we did need an extra law up there, because state law evidently did not, uh, cover us good enough up there. That, I mean, I would surely hope that, uh, we don't go crazy with it either, but I had the same concerns.
Jay, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Um, it's a, it's a confusing topic, because you're dealing with, um, a public entity that has property interests in non-public areas, technically. So, that statement in itself is confusing, I'll try to explain a little bit. This room right here is clearly a public place, it's a public gathering, and any of the incidents that were just mentioned, if they were to occur in this room, this board has administrative power, Roberts Rules of Order, by state statute as well, to, uh, manage and conduct and preserve and protect this meeting and what happens here. If that weren't enough, by state statute, there's a disorderly conduct law that would make it a crime to engage in that type of behavior in this room, or other areas of the courthouse, or other areas of any other public building in a public area, such as a lobby, an entrance, that kind of thing. That state statute, state statute covers those areas. However, there's a need, and I know if necessary, the sheriff could probably do a better job of, of addressing the literal need in some of the non-public areas of public buildings. In other words, uh, you go to the lobby of the detox- In other words, you go to the lobby of the detox center, that's public, but the public isn't invited to walk down the hall and go into counseling sessions or other rooms of that, those aren't public, even though the building is a building that is owned and/or leased by the county. That's what this ordinance is about, is to address that kind of behavior in the non-public areas of buildings that are owned or leased by the county. So it's a, it's a distinction that has to be drawn, state statute doesn't cover it, the ordinance authority of the county would, and so that's the purpose of this particular piece of legislation, if you will, for the county. Hopefully that explains it a little bit.
Well, it, it kind of looks like there's stuff in here that could be omitted because of state statute, other laws, and to, to, to refine this down to cover what you want to cover, rather than, you know, covering the same item two or three times.
Well, the, the language in this proposed ordinance is essentially the disorderly conduct language in state statute, but this, but the state statute would not apply in a non-public setting. So you, we tried to mimic the language in the law that's already acceptable at the state level, and apply that to a non-public setting, such as down the hallway of a county building where the public is not invited, it's not a public meeting, where issues can happen, and like I say, perhaps the best example is the detox facility, where people can go on the fight, be threatening, or have violent behavior, before it escalates to a simple assault, or an aggravated assault, or something worse. You need something like this in those areas that state statute does not cover. So we're not trying to create new language, we're using the state statute language to apply it in an area that the state statute doesn't apply to. I think it's just good management, it's good business by the county to do that. And I wouldn't assume most of the people in this room would ever be the subject to that, because most people don't engage in this behavior. It's for those rare and unique times where it's, it's necessary to preserve health and safety of those who are working in those environments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Good morning, my name is George Farabee, and I've got a question or two. And the first question, if I might.
Proceed.
My first question is, the authority that was used or relied upon, I don't think gets, from the point that Jay mentioned, to the point where we ought to be going. You referenced seven eight twenty sub-two in this proposed ordinance, correct?
Go ahead.
That gives you, the commission, the authority by state law, to make orders respecting the care and preservation of all property, so on so forth. I'm having a real tough time getting from care and preservation, in other words destruction of property, and disorderly conduct. Maybe you can help me connect those two dots. The ordinance talks about disorderly conduct, state law says that you can make orders, doesn't say ordinances, it says make orders to protect, preserve county property. I'm having a hard time connecting the dots, folks.
Jay, do you have any comment?
Mr. Farabee had referenced chapter seven dash eight. Just to kind of back up, chapter seven dash eighteen A is the statute that authorizes the county to pass ordinances and resolutions that effectively carry out the powers granted to the county. Then in chapter seven dash eight, one of those powers is to make orders respecting the care and preservation of all property. It's our position that it clearly, well, I should say one additional thing, under state law, counties are what are referred to, and so are cities, municipalities, creatures of statute, meaning that they derive such authority that is granted to them specifically in statute, or reasonably implied therefrom. It's our position that subsection two is a direct power that grants the county the authority to do exactly what it's doing. At a minimum, it's certainly a reasonable implication from that, that they have the authority to protect and preserve those areas, whether it be from public health safety, or from property damage. All you gotta do is talk to some of your county employees that are, go to work each day in some of these facilities, and they can fill you with stories about what goes on. So we will professionally disagree on that authority, but that's our position.
Okay, once again, I don't believe that disorderly conduct is going to destroy this desk or that chair. Furthermore, enumerated powers the county commission has, this has to be eighteen of them in seven eight dash twenty, four times the legislature, four of those eighteen times to enact ordinance, four times. None of those four are to enact an ordinance for disorderly conduct, or preservation of property. Sub-two talks about to make orders, and I don't pretend to know what make orders means. But I'm guessing, because they use the specific language of to enact ordinances, the legislature didn't intend for this county or any other county to enact an ordinance for disorderly How do you prohibit disorderly conduct? How do you prohibit robbing banks? You can make laws to punish them, but this ordinance, the title says prohibiting disorderly I'll leave you with this. This ordinance duplicates state law, except for one word, public. The only difference is the word public, and I don't think any lower body has the, the right to duplicate what the state legislature did. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item nineteen, Building and Grounds.
Good morning, Mike Cool with Buildings and Grounds. I just have a couple, a few project-related paperwork items that I need to bring to the commission, seeking authorization of the chair's signature on them. The first item is a substantial completion document for the evidence building. This document sets the substantial completion for that project at February 16th. Basically, this formally turns over responsibility for the building and starts warranties based on that date, and I'm seeking your authorization of the chair's signature on that document.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair's signature to this certificate of substantial completion dated February 16th, 2013, for the evidence building energy plant. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I think I've asked it before, and you probably answered it, why February
February 16th was the, we, was the date that we established based on, we had actually extended their contract to that date, and they were complete, Skulls Construction was complete with all their work at that time, prior to that, I should say substantially complete.
And, and we had moved in.
We had moved in, yes.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
The next item is, two items are change orders in regard to the evidence building equipment package. There were four contracts issued for the evidence building equipment package. Today, I'm bringing two of those to you as change orders, one of them, the first one, change order one, which is bid item A, contract, the evidence processing equipment decreases the contract sum by a hundred and four dollars and eighteen cents, reducing it down to seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents, and it adds eighteen days to the contract, which would match the substantial completion date that we had for the contractor as well then. And the second item is, the second change order is for bid item B, which is evidence storage systems, and that one just adds eighteen days to the contract. The contract sum remains the same at two hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Okay, I assume we need separate motions on these items?
Yes, I believe so.
Bid item A, change order, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the chair's signature to change order number one dated April 2nd, 2013, which decreases the contract sum by a hundred and four dollars and eighteen cents and increases the contract time by eighteen calendar dot, days for bid item A.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B, do we have a motion?
I have a question on this. Mike, are these both under the same change order?
Uh, no, they are, we, we have...
Because you've got change order one listed for both of them.
Uh, yeah, they're, they're both change order one in terms of that contract.
So, so they're all on the same change order, we're only gonna have to sign one change order?
No, there'll be, there's, there's a change order number one for contract A, and a change order for contract B.
Okay, so there's two change orders, so they're not on the same change order?
Correct.
All right. I'd make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature to change order number one for bid item B, to extend the contract time by eighteen days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
The final thing I have for you is certificates of substantial completion for those two contracts that were just discussed. Bid item A, evidence processing equipment, and bid item B, evidence storage systems. This just establishes the substantial completion date as February 16th, 2013, just as the Skull contract for the construction of the facility.
That would be my motion.
Okay.
Is your motion for...
Both.
Both?
A and B substantial completion, February 16th.
Is there a second? Is it acceptable that we do these this way? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item twenty, items from emergency services.
Good morning, Leanne Hollenstadt, Director of Emergency Services Communications. We are finishing up with our tower project, and are ready to bid the west site, which will be on Elk Vale Road, excuse me, the east site on Elk Vale Road, and we have a contractor who bid two hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, and that is RCS construction, we would like to award that bid. That is the same contractor who did the west site, and did a very good job.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Where's the money coming from for this deal, for the public's interest?
It has already been secured, partially from the city, partially from the county, and we are under budget.
And it's not a TIF, right?
It is not a TIF.
I'm thinking maybe you should check that out.
No TIF.
See if it'll fit in there.
And it's not a bond?
It is not a bond.
The cash is there?
The cash is there.
And the federal government pay any of it?
No.
Okay, just the city and the county?
City and the county.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to award the contract for the emergency services communication tower expansion simulcast project east site construction to RCS construction for the amount of up to two hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anything else you wish to say?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is items from equalization.
Good morning, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You should have three abatements, abatement applications in front of you. Two of them come from my office, and one of them comes from the property owner. I would suggest you deal with the abatement applications for Rogers and Carlson, and I'll explain those, and then I, I have comments on the other abatement, but I'll wait until after the property owner presents. Carlson and Rogers are abatement requests that our office, that my office has brought to you due to errors. The, the Carlson abatement was an owner-occupied application, where the, where the owner-occupied classification was not applied to the property, and the property owner did provide an application, does qualify, we just mistakenly didn't apply it. But we do have a timely application. The Rogers' abatement request is a mobile home, a registered mobile home that was mistakenly registered late. When a registered mobile home is registered late, there's a penalty that's applied, the penalty is an increase on the assessment, and it shouldn't have been late. Again, this was timely and another mistake on my office.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, make it, make a motion to approve the abatement test presented by the Director of Equalization.
Take a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the abatements as offered by the Equalization Department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, you have one other abatement request that comes to you from the property owner, and I will add my comments after theirs.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Jason James.
Hi, I'm Josie Chase.
I'm Dolores Hayes.
We are, sit on the Board of Directors for a nonprofit organization that was founded in 2000, and formally incorporated under the state of South Dakota called Chanculuta Omani, and we're asking for an abatement. Also, we have papers that we've presented to you that show that we believe under the history that we were not, we are tax exempt, I should say, under the IRS, as well as the state of South Dakota, and we are being taxed for 2006, which we were already, 2007, I'm sorry, and we were already identified as a tax-exempt organization. So now we have received a notice for expiration of right of redemption on the property, and that's what we're here to discuss with you.
Any questions by the commission?
Mr. Chair, yes, I do. It says in there, one from the IRS, that you're taking donations and things to use in which way?
We are considered a Native American church, we offer Native American...
Church, you said?
Yes, yes, sir. So we offer services through traditional ceremonies... Um, so we offer services through, um, traditional ceremonies so people make donations, um, to our organization.
How many acres are we talking about?
Thirty acres, sir.
Three?
Thirty, thirty, sir.
Okay. In order to, um, have a full perspective on this, Shannon, do you wish to make your comments, comments at this point?
Excuse me. Yes. Uh, the, the property is exempt from real estate taxes. Uh, they are a, a nonprofit organization. They are exempt, uh, under a religious category, I think. Uh, and it, it was one of the, the properties that the commission approved as an exempt property, uh, earlier, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the property applied, the property owners applied for an exemption, uh, in 2008. It applied to 2008's assessment, taxes paid in 2009. Uh, we have an application, uh, from that time and, and since, and they have been exempt since. The application is due, though, uh, November 1st of 2007. The commission doesn't, uh, take action on that, uh, until April, whi, which, uh, the commission just did here recently. Uh, the, the abatement request is for taxes for the year previous that they were exempt. Uh, the property owners might have been a nonprofit organization, uh, might have been doing whatever they do on the property to make it exempt, uh, in the year previous, but we did not have an application and an approval by the County Board of Equalization for that exemption. Uh, state law requires for an exemption from property taxes that there be an application made and approval by the County Board of Equalization. For the year that's requested, that wasn't the case. Now, since then, there has been, uh, a tax certificates that has been sold for this year on the taxes. And, and I believe there's some problems with, uh, granting an abatement when we have a tax certificate sold as well.
Janet?
The certificate on this property is for 2007 taxes, which were payable in 2008. And they are held by a third party. So my-
So Janet, what kind of notification would they have received about the tax?
The, the tax notices would have went out. Um, they would have been advertised in the paper. They would have gotten a tax notice. And they thought they were exempt apparently, so they didn't pay them. However, $4,544.64 is due to the third party who owns this tax certificate. So if they don't pay them back, they're going to lose the property.
Thank you, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Mr. Rittberger is correct in a couple areas I just wanted to point out. Um, that it is an exclusive rem, but you have to make application by the deadlines in statute or you can't have your exemption. Unfortunately, they may well have had all of the, the facts to support that. An application just simply wasn't done and that's, that's a threshold issue in order to get exempt status. Uh, secondly, under, uh, Chapter 1018, which is the abatement, uh, uh, chapter, and I think it's actually the first statute, 1018-1, it makes it real clear if there's an outstanding certificate, uh, you cannot grant an abatement. That's state law as well. So unfortunately, um, there's, there's no way to legally grant an abatement that was not applied for under, in this case, I guess, a religious exemption. And secondly, a certificate was sold and is still outstanding, and that also forbids the, um, granting of an abatement.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Do, do you have any?
How do we proceed then? Because, um, I think we made a copy of, of the document for our application stating that, um, November 1st, 2007, we were, um, identified as exempt.
So, did you make an application for exemption through the-
Through the-
Equalization Office?
Yes, we did.
In 2007?
Well, um, I think it was probably in 2007. This is, um, dated November 1st, 2007, that we were identified as tax exempt. And that's the year under question.
But, and the question was, did you file an application with the Equalization Office for tax exempt status?
Yes, we did.
And you've got a copy of that?
Yes, and I think we gave you the copy. They just use the same form, I believe. We apply and then they approve it.
Mr. Chair, I can address the date there.
Okay.
The application you have, November, uh, 1st? Yeah. Uh-
Yeah.
The, the property owner made an application for exemption on the property. I don't see a date that it was submitted, but, um, the, the assessment date is November 1st of 2007.
Yes.
And the application has to be made, uh, by the assessment date, by November 1st. But it applies to the 2008, uh, assessment year, taxes paid in 2009. The, the law requires that for a property to be exempt from property taxes, an application has to be made by the assessment date for the upcoming assessment year. The County Board of Equalization, made up of county commissioners, approved that in, in April. Uh, so in this case, the application was due by November 1st, which is the assessment date for the 2008 assessment, taxes paid in 2009. And the property has been exempt since then, uh, which, which this application is for. It was just made in Novem, uh, in November of '07 because that's the assessment date for '08.
Okay, and that's the year of the taxes that were being, um-
I mean, I don't quite understand it.
They're in question.
Yeah. They're in question.
But then here, you've got November 24th, 2000.
Shannon, is that how you see that? That the abatement they're asking for is the one that they filed for?
The, the application was made for the 2008 assessment year. Uh, she's correct that, uh, that they made the application in the year of 2007. In essence, uh, what she is asking for is, is, uh, it, and they, they made application during the year of 2007, uh, which, uh, she might say that they were using the property in the same manner. But to be exempt for the 2000 assessment year, they would have had to have made application by November 1st, 2006.
I see. Okay.
And we received our tax exempt status in 2006.
On April 28th of 2000.
From who?
From the state.
But see, that doesn't make any difference on your tax exempt property. Yet, that's a, that's another process that you gotta go through.
Uh-huh.
You would have had, you would have had to done that, you would have had to done that in the Equalization Office by November 1st of 2006 to cover your 2007 taxes, which is due in 2008.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Jay, how do we get rid of a tax certificate?
We can't.
It's kind of moot because I don't know how you do that.
Unless there's something I'm missing and, and the treasurer might be able to fill in. But if there's a tax certificate out there, you can redeem from it. You can pay, you can pay your tax.
I'm sure the county is not going to redeem it.
No, that would be up to the, if the landowner does not want that certificate to ripen into a treasurer's deed or a tax deed, then they would need to pay their taxes, which means redeeming from that tax certificate holder.
Really, the taxes aren't owed, so we have nothing to forgive them for because the taxes have been paid.
I, I don't, I don't see that, maybe I'm, I don't see that there's any action the county can-
I don't either. I, I, it's a done deal. If they, if they redeem it, maybe they can come back then, then to us and say something.
But even then, I don't think we can do anything because it was a legal tax, it was a legal tax at that time.
I mean, that's why-
Right, and the, the application wasn't, uh, made timely. There's a, you know, there's a difference between getting your nonprofit status from the state. That has nothing to do, that might be a piece, but it has nothing to do with this board looking at exempt status for religious, benevolent, charitable, educational, all the different types of tax exempt statuses. Those all have specific dates that you have to apply for that specific exemption. And unfortunately, that was missed by the owner of the property.
So there, so there's nothing that these, uh, people can do other than pay the, pay the certificate?
Right. It's my understanding you cannot retroactively go backwards and grant an exempt status when the application was not timely filed.
Okay.
And then we have the additional issue of that the fact that there is a tax certificate, which the legislature has said if there's a certificate on that property, uh, you can't abate any taxes. So there's two separate statutes at work here, which basically tie your hands.
Right. Shannon, did you have something you wish to offer?
No, that was it.
Janet, I think.
Janet, how about you?
So it looks like there's not much we can do and the only, only options that you have to, so you can maintain that property would be to pay the redemption part. So, so I don't know, since, since they've made application, do we need to, to make a motion to deny this? Okay, that would be my motion.
I think so.
Legally, we don't have, we can't do anything for you, so we'll have to deny your application.
We do have a motion. Commissioner Davis seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Items from the Fire Administrator.
Good morning, Denny Gordon, Painton County Fire. First item on the agenda is, uh, basically looking for a motion to authorize, uh, the Fire Service Board to talk with Kelloland TV about possible purchase of their tower and building out southwest of Wall. It's a integral part of our communications system out there. Uh, Kelloland has no equipment located in the building or on the, on the tower anymore. And they've kind of made an offer that if we'd be interested in purchasing it. Don't have a purchase price. Um, but I thought at this point it would just at least get your authorization to move forward with that.
Well, I'll make that motion. It'd be rude to talk to them.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the Fire Service Board to investigate the purchase of the tower. Any further discussion?
Could we, could we add something to that, that Denny has to climb this tower at least once?
I'm not a, I'm not a, uh, I'm not certified to climb towers, but our two radiotechs are.
And along with that, when you, if, if and when you come back, you probably just will bring along a, what's it gonna cost to maintain?
Absolutely. Well, first of all, we gotta get over the first hump and see if they're truly interested in selling it, and if so, is it a budgetable amount?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And the, um, verbalized conditions, uh, are not part of the motion, Denny?
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Second item.
Second item is, uh, is a motion to rescind the, uh, resolution that was passed on July 3rd, 2012 prohibiting fireworks and, and open burning. Uh, I'll try and give a very, very quick recap of that so we're all on the same page. On April 3rd, 2012, a resolution was passed by the commissioners that prohibited open burning in the county. On, at the same day, April 3rd, there was another resolution passed that prohibited fire, the use or discharge of fireworks. So we had two resolutions, one open burning, one dealing with fireworks. Then, uh, at the same time, we were also working on Painton County Ordinance Number 632, which then was an ordinance that prohibited under certain conditions, uh, open burning. We did allow for, um, special conditions to continue on such as charcoal grills and burn barrels and outdoor fireplaces, branding iron fires, uh, and even campground fires and, fires in campgrounds, commercial state, federal campground. So that ordinance, Number 632, was passed on April 17th. So then we had a burn ordinance in place, again, that went into effect depending upon the grasslands fire danger. Burning conditions, fire conditions continued to be extreme, uh, through May, June. So then on July 3rd, at the regular county commission, an emergency resolution was passed that banned all open fires and fireworks for the time period specified in there. Uh, and so technically, and also then that, uh, resolution said that the only way that this emergency one could come off is by a simple motion of the county commission. So that's kind of where we're at today. Sat down with Jay, we've talked about it. Um, just asking for a motion to, I guess, uh, rescind those burning and the prohibitive, prohibiting of fireworks at this time, which will simply return us back to normal. Kind of forgot about it through the winter, I guess, so. Which would allow then campfires in approved campgrounds, both state, federal, private, until we get conditions, again, that are bad enough firewise that we have to do something different, so.
Can I make a motion to rescind, uh, the resolution as far as it concerns emergency or open burning in campgrounds?
Yes.
Period.
There a second?
I'm not used to fireworks.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second. I like that one.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, anything further? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a comment.
Motion carried. You, you may comment, yes.
There's some confusion, at least in my mind and one deputy sheriff's mind, as to who this, the ordinance that you folks passed applies to. Last fall, it was a night, I'm too bad the sheriff, well, we got a dep, Deputy Mueller is here. I'll ask this question first of, of you folks. Does that ordinance apply to everybody in the county or just those outside the Black Hills Fire Protection District?
Ordinance 632?
632, yes.
I think it applies to everybody in the county except, uh, I would imagine that the federal law supersedes our ordinance.
My, my question was the state law.
I think the state law probably supersedes ours, too.
If I may, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Uh, this question has come up and it came up last year. I mean, fortunately, what was nice last year during our drought situation is we had federal, state, and local officials that were in concert with one another for the betterment of everyone statewide, not just Pennington County or not just the city. And so, uh, what these folks were able to do is bring their wisdom together and say, we're going to honor, the state and fed said, we'll honor, uh, your ordinance in the Black Hills Fire Protection District and elsewhere because we agree with you common sense, uh, we have to do this. Statutorily, and, and this is where, uh, Mr. Farabee and I probably agree. Statutorily, uh, yeah.
We'll keep going, George.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to come up here.
Can I go put a mark on the wall someplace?
That's disorderly conduct.
No, that's destruction of property, sir.
Disorderly conduct.
Sir, no. Go ahead. Sorry.
Um, by, uh, statutory construction is a term used when you have what could appear to be conflicting statutes or conflicting laws and how do you resolve the differences and who, who has authority to do what? Uh, the county has the general authority to, uh, ban fireworks under certain limited circumstances, you're aware of that. The county has general authority to, uh, pass ordinances dealing with open burning. But those are general authorities. Uh, there's not a lot of specific guidance or specificity to those general- There's not a lot of specific guidance or specificity to those general authorization or enactment statutes. The Black Hills Fire Protection District is a unique area that our state legislature specifically and uniquely carved out of Pennington County, for instance, and said, here's who has authority to issue permits for burning and so forth. And it seems like it's Department of Agriculture, and it's a state and federal kind of joint permitting authority, if I recall right. I haven't looked at it for a while. So my opinion is, is that overrides, the specific always overrides the general. That's an area that I really don't believe our Pennington County Ordinance 632 has direct application, because the permitting authority for open burning is left to those agencies, specifically in statute, not us as the county. Again, just full circle, however, fortunately, all of those folks get together and try to do what's right, regardless of jurisdictional boundaries and authorities and so forth. So I hope to answer that question, that I don't, I don't believe our ordinance could override their decision to issue a burn permit to Mr. Farabee or anyone else who might be in that, that specific locale.
Once again, my question is really, really simple, and really to the point. Who has jurisdiction over me at 11495 Gillette Prairie Road? I can, I can only have one boss, a government boss. Who is that boss? Is it the county, the state, or the feds?
Under certain circumstances, probably all three. But we're not going to be laborious any further. It has nothing to do with an agenda item. We've already passed the motion, so we'll proceed to...
Excuse me, sir, the open burning, if, if you folks declare open burning prohibited, or you prohibit open burning, and the state, the state fire management officer allows me to burn, then you put this fellow back here, Deputy Mueller, you put him in a tough spot. This happened to me last fall. This is not hypothetical. The deputy was ready to haul me to town, because he thought that the county ban applied to me. We reasoned, and finally, he decided, yes, that I was exempt from the county. But that's one deputy. But that fellow there needs to tell his deputies.
He can talk to the State Attorney and get his direction.
We're done talking about this. Items from the highway department. Thank you. Did we vote on that motion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good morning, Hines Young, Painton County Highway Superintendent. Item I have is authorization to advertise for bids for repair to three bridges. One of them is on Forest Road, one's on Shields Road, and one is on Thunderhead Falls. I provided you with a couple pictures to see what I'm looking at, and we, these are all precast type structures, so we can replace one deck unit. So we're going to be replacing outside deck units on these structures. So, right, today, I'm just seeking authorization, authorization to bid, and I will bring back the, the successful bidder or low bidder at another time to award.
Make a motion to, to advertise for bids, or authorize the county highway superintendent to advertise for bids for the repair of the bridges he's noted.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just like to ask one question. Hines, this looks to me, and I'm no engineer by any means, but it looks to me like the, maybe the salt and stuff that we're using is causing the corrosion of the cement of these bridges?
You are correct.
So the federal government has seen in its infinite wisdom, which is not much anymore, to disallow sand, and so now we're into a salt mixture, which causes this kind of corrosion and replacement of bridges.
Yes, it does, and usually it's the outside deck sections, because as you push the snow off, the salt and the rain, they, it goes over the edge of the bridge and starts corroding the rebar and pops the concrete.
That was for the public's interest, in case they wanted to know.
Okay.
That's all I have under highway.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Hines.
I'm here for the next item, too.
Okay, we will move then to that one, and that is the healthcare trust for, trust board.
Yes, when I presented the information two, three weeks ago about what the healthcare trust board recommendation was for healthcare premiums, we had six other items that the healthcare trust board voted on to make changes to the plan. And I guess I walked away that day without a motion, and, and today, I'm seeking approval of the county commission, commissioners approving the action taken by the healthcare trust board. The first one was to office co-pay for specialist physicians. We were raising that from 25 to $35. Limit chiropractor visits to 26 a year with a $25 co-pay. Incorporate office co-pay for mental health into the respective 25 or 35. Change the definition of morbid obesity. Change the wording under our transplant language to include the center of excellence. And to remove the convenience benefit and common accident benefit. And our recommendation was to have these all take effect July 1st, and, and I'm just seeking, as chairman of that board, I'm seeking formal approval by the commissioners of those recommended changes, just to have it on record.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the employee healthcare plan changes as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. What is the convenience benefit?
There was a, a convenience benefit that was kind of tied into the accidents benefit, where you didn't have to pay deductible on the first, I think it was $150. Just some language in there we're trying to clean up.
Wasn't it, if, if two people were involved in the accident, you only had to pay the deductible on one?
There you go. That's correct, yeah. But it was tied into the accident language, and it's used very rarely, and it was recommended by gallier benefits, too. We should get rid of that language, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 25.
Item 25 is a Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission appointment. They currently have an opening on their Board of Commissioners, and we advertised, we received one applicant that was routed through Pennington County Housing. They have sent a response back to you indicating they have some concerns, however, they sincerely appreciate her interest in serving. The applicant is here, if the board has any questions, and I believe Mr. Wells is here on behalf of Chairman Dunneffin, who had a prior commitment. So I'll open it up to the board for any questions, concerns.
What's the issue, the commissioner?
Mr. Chair, as I read the letter from Chairman, Chairman, or Chairwoman Dunneffin, the lady that applied has a sister who works for the Pennington County Housing. And I also heard that there was a sister-in-law, and I may be wrong about that, but I'd feel that that would have a problem with the conflict of interest. Especially in the executive sessions and budget hearings and, and raise hearings and things on that order. So I, I need some information on that.
Hi, I'm Sheri Monty.
It's on the back.
And then that lady who applied. I don't think there'll be any conflict between, it's basically my sister-in-law. We're both professional. We, I have my own opinions. I wasn't prepared for this. What I want to do is help families, children, people, low income. It has nothing to do with my sister-in-law, where she works. She has a sister who works there. I have no ties to her at all. I will keep this professionally. And that's basically all I can tell you, because you do not know me. I voice my own opinion. I may listen to others, but does not mean I'm going to agree with them. As far as my sister-in-law and I, it's two different positions. We don't talk about each other's job ethics or anything like that. So I'm just leaving it up to you. I wish I was better prepared for this.
You've written a very comprehensive letter.
Thank you.
Which was well done. Do you, sir, have anything you want, input you want to make?
Mr. Wells. Wells.
Or, or, excuse me, I look in the wrong, yud.
Hi, I'm Doug Wells, Executive Director, Pennington County Housing. Chairman Dunneffin just asked me to be here today if you had any questions, if you wanted me to assure you that this wasn't any, meant in any way to be a criticism of the applicant or anything else. She just had a concern about a potential conflict, and, and expressed that to the commission. This is, obviously, this is your decision to make the appointments.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Wells. How many people serve on the board?
Five.
It's a five-person board, and, and they, and the sister, and is it a sister-in-law, you said?
My sister-in-law.
Okay, this, does the sister-in-law work for you?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you provide the supervision for her?
Correct. I'm not her direct supervisor. There's another supervisor between us.
There's another layer of management under you that provides supervision for her. How many employees are there with Pennington County Housing?
Thirty-four, full-time.
Thirty-four?
Yes.
And, and since I'm really not as familiar with Pennington County Housing Board as, as maybe I should be, can you, can you briefly tell me what their role is in, in the operation of the Pennington County, of your, of your 37, 34 people?
They provide, they supervise me directly, they hire me, I run the agency on the day-to-day basis. They provide, they set policy, provide guidance and oversight to the commission.
Budget?
They approve budgets, they, well, they have complete oversight, they can set all policy. They're, they don't do the day-to-day management, but, but they are the oversight board.
And, and do they, do they set individual salaries?
No, not generally, with the exception of myself.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Doug, they, they do set individual salaries as far as budget items.
They certainly set the...
And the raises, is raises...
Generally...
...come to your benefit, and then does it go to the board from your...
Yes, generally, they set the, they of course set the budget limits, they generally set an overall, an increase limit. They generally are not involved in individual employees' salaries. That's usually left to me. They have that authority if they choose to, but generally, they, they set a, a limit on what I can do and leave the details to me.
Can you, can you think of any situation where conflict of interest would, would impact the operation of the program?
The only conflict, I'd see if there were some disciplinary action against that employee or something, and the board took exception with what I did. The board would not likely be directly involved in the, the, any disciplinary action of a, of an individual employee, other than myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not 100% sure it's appropriate, but what, what are the, the, what are the other four members right now of the board do? I mean, generally speaking.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The other four members that are currently on the board?
Okay.
What do they do?
As far as their private lives, or?
Generally speaking.
Yeah.
No names, no...
Okay, we have, well, there's quite a variety. There's, there's a property manager, is a profession of one, there's business person.
I guess that's what I was getting at, is I think a good mix of people is probably right for, for the board.
Well, I would think that if she had relatives that was the executive director, there may be a conflict, but I, I think this is pretty far removed, unless, unless somebody can point out something much more blatant than what, what we're seeing here today, I, I don't see a problem with approving this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I don't necessarily see a problem either. I just wanted to bring it out for the public's benefit, so everybody knows if it comes up down the road that this is the case. Well, now everybody knows that it is the case. And so the conversation here says that we probably don't have a problem with conflict of interest, so depending on how the vote goes, I, that'll be the way it is.
In order to vote, we need a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion to appoint this young lady in Pennington County Housing Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have anything you want to say before you are committed?
Got a sentence on you?
Are you committed?
Before you're committed?
I'm ready. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, the one thing that I would really like to see out of all of this is that the federal government, state of South Dakota, whoever else is into this, would get us out of the Pennington County Housing Authority. We have absolutely nothing to say about it whatsoever. And way back when, when I was, first came on the commission, I was assigned to the Pennington County Housing Board. The first time I went, they invited me to leave, because they were going into executive session for the whole meeting, and I didn't have privilege to their executive session. So I, I really don't know why we're even involved, but that's just my statement. Thanks.
Well, that, just one more question, I guess, but we all have them. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item is item 26, request to waive administrative penalty fees. And we have Mr. Bill Whitney here.
Thank you and good morning. My name is Bill Whitney. I work for Stanley Johnson Concrete. We're a highway contractor that does roads and streets, and, and this particular project where we're setting our batch plan is, is at exit 116. It's 11 miles of interstate highway reconstruction east of Wall and the eastbound lanes. We secured a piece of property from, from Larry Rudin, and totally unaware of the requirement for a conditional use permit, and so was he, we went ahead and we stripped a piece of ground and, and got started. You know, we bid under the documents provided to us by the South Dakota Department of Transportation, and, you know, there's certain rules and regulations that we abide by there, and totally unaware of this permit, we did not apply for one. We did immediately after the letter was sent to Larry, and we now have our permit, but we were penalized. And at this point, I'd ask if we could waive the, if you people could waive the penalty, and that's the short and sweet of it, I guess. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Dan, or do you have any thing you want to offer?
Yeah, we just became aware of the operation on the property, sent the property owner a letter, and yes, because of its setup prior to getting the conditional use permit, he was required to pay the double, the penalty fees of double the application plus the $500.
Was he in operation? Was it, was he making concrete out there?
There were stockpiles out there already, and the land was all stripped and set up.
So the conditional use permit was to strip the land and bring materials in?
It's to set up a temporary operation. Even if it's just stockpiles, that requires the conditional use permit.
And, and what...
And that was already out there.
What, what is it that we're trying to cover with this conditional use permit? Make sure the prop, or the ground is reclaimed afterwards?
Yes.
And, and what does the state require of... And, and what does the state require of, I'll ask this gentleman here, what's the state require of you as far as reclaiming that property?
They usually have, they, in the documents, they, they say that when the project is completed, anything within a certain distance of the roadway has to be restored to its original condition within that year. So, uh, by the time our completion date is up, we have, you know, with a reasonable amount of time, because we usually get into frozen ground, we have until the next spring to reclaim and, and do our seeding.
Does that include this spot where you've got the, the batch plan?
They, they do include those, yes.
Well, it looks like we're getting done, whether, you know, he was, he was covered on all of the items that we wanted, that our conditional use permit would have required.
What do you mean, as far as the state requirements?
Yeah.
A lot of it is somewhat, we do go in and we make sure that it is reclaimed after they're done, the whole property, and in accordance with the, a landowner too, to make sure it's done according to that.
So, how would have they known that this was, they was required to get a conditional use permit?
Uh, just, you know, we hope that people check with us before they set up, uh, property owners. I mean, the applicant, the landowner, already has a conditional use permit for a riding arena on his property, this is the same property, so.
And I, I just have to ask this, Stanley Johnson does lots, lots of work. And this is the first time you've kind of, this is the first time that you've, you've had this come up? Or, wow.
We bought this particular plant in nineteen ninety-three, the first time we set it up was in Custer County, south of Custer, along the Fall River. In eleven, we were at the airport, which apparently is city property.
Yep.
In oh, uh, in oh seven, we were at exit sixty-seven, or sixty-one, and I think we were in Box Elder.
Oh, so it's just been kind of, oh my gosh.
We've been everywhere with it, Meade County, Lawrence County. And this is the very first time that we've ever come up against, you know, we've got requirements of this kind.
Makes sense.
We're not opposed to, to give them the permits, or we do that with the D and R, the air quality. We have an ongoing air quality with the State of South Dakota. We've, we've got everything, and we were just totally unaware.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move that we waive the $800 penalty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty sure that, uh, the sheriff's office does not waive people and tickets, because gee, I didn't know it. It's not an excuse.
Okay, any other comments?
No, my name is Bruce Meister, I'm just a, an observer out here in the audience today. And I'm, I'm really, really curious as to what the purpose of this permit is. Uh, in the, in the first place, it's covered by state statute or state law as to what this company needs to do. And if the county requires a permit, it should be specified or stipulated in the instructions from the state, because they should know about it. If they don't know about it, then that's the state's problem, it's not the contractor's problem. Now, with it being covered by the state law, what they have to do, I don't see any reason for a, a conditional use permit from the, from the county. That's my comment.
Any other comments? Hearing that, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I don't like it myself.
Please.
Yes, do.
Do we have a motion?
So, make a motion to take a ten-minute break.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to take a ten-minute break, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We need a motion to go into a board of adjustment.
I'm still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to convene the board of adjustment. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Good morning, Dan Jenison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, thirteen oh four, Sugar Daddy's Kerry Johnston, to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to six feet for a deck, and from twenty-five feet to twenty-one feet for an existing building in a highway service zoning district. Uh, this item had been before you a number of times. This is brought back to you because we were waiting to make sure they got a floodplain development permit. They have submitted that, it is, is just being reviewed at this time. I have had it preliminary reviewed by the County Highway Department. It appears to be everything in order, so we're just awaiting to have him sign off on it. I don't know if you have any other question?
So, he's the only one for the floodplain?
To review it, yes. He's the only one that reviews it.
I have a couple of questions, Dan. It says, this has been turned over to the State's Attorney's Office for legal action. What legal action are we doing? About what? About the setbacks, or about what?
Uh, to bring the property into compliance is mainly the case, is to make sure he brings the property into compliance. I believe it was put down, or just, they submitted their application, they were given like eight months to comply with planning and zoning, and, and part of that was to get this variance request. So, I believe it's still in litigation, it's just not finalized, awaiting the outcome of this variance request.
Aren't we, aren't we doing that in the exact reverse to what we usually do? We usually not do anything here until the court case is settled?
I believe the word was, we couldn't settle the court case unless this was done.
If I may, if I may, Commissioners, Nate Oviet on behalf of Bubba Johnston. Nate Oviet on behalf of Bubba Johnston. The, the current standing of the case is that it's been dismissed, it can be rebrought, but at present, it is dismissed.
Okay, thank you. The thing I don't, that I'm gonna, I don't understand, Dan, is the gasoline pump was on the premises prior to nineteen ninety-four, is considered grandfather as to the gasoline pump. And you got a couple of other things. Well, uh, the propane tank appears, does not require further action, as it was not expanded upon. It seems to me that we always, if you're going to do something on your property, you bring that property into compliance, everything on it. You don't pick out, well, this, this ten square feet is in compliance. Don't we make them bring everything into compliance that's on the property? If you're going to get something new again?
Well, they're expanding the restaurant and not the gas pumps. And that's the way we've been, I've had this conversation with our State's Attorneys, and this is what he's agreed, that this is the way we need to do it in our office.
But, but I thought, kind of what Ron was talking, though, I thought, I've heard you say on other properties, that, that they're all grandfathered under these things, but then if you're going to go do any work on the property, then they have to bring everything up to standards.
Absolutely, that's the way it's always been.
Isn't, haven't we had that before, or am I dreaming part of this?
It was interesting, we used to do it that way, but then, uh, upon newer interpretation of our, from the State's Attorney's Office, this is the way we've been told to do it from here on out.
And when did that go into effect?
Uh, it came up with the racetrack at one time, the racetrack, they were building an addition or tearing something down, and they had to, uh, it was not considered an expansion, they would, they could get a building permit.
How long ago?
Oh, that was probably four or five years ago.
We have some fairly new commissioners on here that have heard that within the last two to three years, that, that everything needs to be brought up. So, that's the confusion, is if they're hearing, remember hearing that everything needed to be brought up to compliance, but we started this four or five years ago. We kind of, I think, I can see your confusion.
No, I tell you, confusion was, but the last statement says the former State's Attorney, and I think that could be part of the reason he's the former State's Attorney.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that the people at the Sugar Shack have done a good job, being the neighbors in that area, being a, basically a place that serves the public. It's quite evident that they do pretty well to serve the public, because they have a lot of the public come in there. And they do a good job of that, uh, they're easy folks to get along with. I understand that the new, new owners of the property next door are, uh, or one of them is here today, and that questions could be asked. But I, frankly, I'm, um, just to get, I, I myself am getting a little tired of being a referee. And I think it's time we settle this thing. And the applicant has done basically everything he can do to bring his property into compliance. And I don't know what else he can do unless we just put him out of business. So, if that's where we're headed today, I don't want to, I guess, I wouldn't want to be part of that, but I think it's time to make the decision and get on with life.
Patrick, did you have anything you wanted to contribute to this discussion?
No.
Smart move, Ben.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the request as presented by the applicant, and that's it.
May I make a comment?
We need a second to my motion.
Do we have a second to the motion? I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are you gonna, are you going to put the three requirements that, that the staff is?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll clarify the motion.
As per the applicant's request and the recommendation by the staff.
And second concurs, so, okay, now we can open it up for discussion. As to anything bearing on the motion.
Um, my name is John Fitzgerald, I'm for Frank Boyle. And Mr. Boyle is the adjacent owner of the Big Lock Chair Resort, next to the Sugar Shack.
Mr. Chair, just a second, you say he's the owner?
Of the Big Lock Chair Resort, adjacent to the Sugar Shack. Mr. Boyle is the owner of that. So, um.
I just thought some, I thought it'd been sold.
Nope, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
A few of the things Mr. Boyle has brought.
Let him finish, please.
To my attention, to bring to your attention, is basically the, the history of this. The small building you see to the right is from the nineteen forties. Large carpet-covered deck was built in two thousand and two, it was built without a permit. And it was built not in compliance with your ordinances, it's, as you know, it's all into the setback, I think approximately twelve to nineteen feet. In two thousand and ten, there was a building permit that was kind of retroactively issued to, to do it. There was no onsite off-street parking until about two months ago. There was problems with flooding in the bathroom, and all those patrons from the Sugar Shack would have to go over to, to my client's establishment and ask him to use his restroom. But, you know, more importantly, or the heart of the matter is, is that, you know, there's South Dakota administrative rules that, that regulate the septic system in the floodplain. And most notably, administrative rule seventy-four fifty-three zero one seventeen. And that's that the, the absorption system or the drain field not be located in a floodplain. And it is located in the floodplain. And, uh, there's been no approval from the secretary that, that that's okay. The distances between the well and the septic system, septic tank, drain field, and the water source, which is the creek, do not meet the administrative rules of South Dakota's minimum distance requirement, seventy-four fifty-three zero one nineteen. Your own administrative rules say things that, um, about non-conformities. And those types of things that they say would be in administrative rule four oh one, which is basically to, or not administrative rule four oh one, but section four oh one intent. And that's that non-conformities may be permitted until they're removed. Further intent of you all is that the non-conformities not be enlarged upon, expanded, extended, nor be used as a ground for adding additional structures prohibited elsewhere in the same district. And the original nineteen forty structure is a non-conforming use based on the minimum setback requirements of twenty-five feet for non-fuel station businesses. If it stopped selling gas, it would be still about a foot off on one side of the building where the setbacks go, or where the setbacks go. Section four oh one of your ordinances, subsection D, states that "Any non-conforming use of land shall not be expanded in such a manner so as to increase its non-conformity." And that's exactly what's been done. It was done illegally, and it's easy to see why it was done illegally. It altered the structure. And the, the structural alteration of the Sugar Shack would have required a wastewater treatment system plan. That is section two oh four J D. Change in structure served, served by an onsite wastewater treatment system. When a structure on a property is altered or replaced, and is currently served by an onsite wastewater treatment system, Pennington County shall require the owner of the property to obtain an onsite wastewater treatment system operating permit prior to issuance of a building permit. The capacity grew by sixty-three people. And that combined with the fact that the system is located in a floodplain, brings into question, uh, is that okay? Is there groundwater pollution due to the increased use? And I think that you can legally take a look at those, those issues now, that there's been an increase in the non-conformity. Technically, by your ordinances, um, you know, non-conformities are, are permitted until they're removed, so long as they're not added on to, enlarged upon. The burden to show that, I don't believe by looking at your ordinances, is just to bring the property into compliance. I believe the burden is found in, on page one hundred and eighty-one, section five oh seven, requirements for granting a variance. Before, the board of adjustments shall have the authority to grant a variance. The person claiming the variance has the burden of showing, one, the granting of a permit shall not be contrary to the public interest. Two, the literal enforcement of this zoning ordinance shall result in an unnecessary hardship. And then three is, is the, is really the procedure in how this sort of thing is, is brought up in front of you. I don't know if there's, there's been satisfaction of that burden by the current owner of the Sugar Shack to say, or I think would, would have satisfaction of that burden, would, would be to say, I bought this thing and I didn't know about any of these non-conformities. I had no idea, and please don't make me bring my property into compliance, not by asking for a variance, but by removing these, these non-conforming structures. I think, uh, any reputable title company would have picked up on these things, would have picked up on all of these structures that are located in a floodplain, the potential hazardous wastes that could end up in the public's drinking water, which is a reason I don't think it, it would be in the public's interest to grant this variance. Now, I'm not saying that it's impossible, or that structures can't be removed, or, or that certain things can't be redone, but my client is just a, a. certain things can't be redone, but my client is just a tad bit frustrated in the fact that to follow the law, like he had to do, or like anybody would have to do to make additions or do things, that it'd be brought to your attention before and not afterwards, and not in the manner that this has been done with. I think to make the statement, or to ask you right now for this variance would be premature, since the seating has been increased to such a great extent without any kind of, at least one test by the Department of Natural Resources, to say that the increased usage on the septic system does not pose a danger to the public. And then that the Secretary of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources okay this septic system, including the drain field in the floodplain, that they okay the violations of the minimum distances between well and septic system, and between drain field and water source, before you approve this, because you are the watchdog for the community, for the county. And my client just doesn't want to see anything done that wouldn't be in the public's best interest. Thank you very much.
Nate Oviet again, on behalf of the Sugar Shack. It's too far too nice of a day to spend too much longer on this issue, so I'll try to keep this short. Mr. Fitzgerald has expressed the standard, which is it's in the public interest and it's necessary. As we've discussed multiple times, this is a substantial amount of the Sugar Shack's business related to this. The variance is required to get us into compliance. That's the issue. That's the whole issue, is that's why the variance is needed, is to get this into compliance so that the Sugar Shack can continue doing business. Now, Mr. Jensen and his team have already gone out and done all of the necessary investigations, and looked through all of the nooks and crannies of the Sugar Shack, and have come back and told you all that it's in compliance. There's nothing more my client can do. He's bent over backwards to make sure that everything is in compliance for this variance request. That's precisely why we're here today, is to get this thing done. To echo Commissioner Davis, we just can't keep doing this. Last time, a new laundry list was presented. We've met those requirements. We've gone through and jumped through all those hoops and done all of those things. Mr. Jensen has confirmed that. Now, today, there's a whole new list of requirements that Mr. Boyle wants us to comply with. Well, Mr. Jensen has investigated those things, and he's found that the property's in compliance. There's nothing more we can do. So for that reason, because so much of the Sugar Shack's livelihood depends on this variance, we're requesting that the commission grant the variance. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
If it was so important, why did we have to go to court to have him get that variance, to make that action?
Well, Commissioner, when he purchased the property, he was not aware of the non-conformity.
However, he did become aware. He was given a time period which he did not do. He did not.
And that was a filing error at best. Mr. Grody can speak on that issue as far as why we had to go down that road. But we've taken care of it. The issue's been dismissed at present, and so that's why we're here.
But my point is, if it was so important to get that variance so he could continue business, it seems like he would have jumped on it right away, rather than forcing the county to go ahead and go forward with legal action.
We responded very shortly, as soon as the county did, and we made every effort to ameliorate that.
You were given eight months, and you did, that time period ran out, and then we had to again approach you legally.
That's correct.
Gentlemen back there, wanted to comment, sir?
I'm very brief. I just want to say I live up that direction, and that's my very favorite place to eat in all of South Dakota. I hope you can sort this out and keep it there. It'll damage my life if it goes away.
We know they're good hamburgers.
Sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Strong. Thank you for letting me comment, and I'm just gonna be brief, too. And I was in the mortgage business before, did commercial and residential, and it was brought up about title being done. And if it was so important that these things, before a person bought a business, it would have been in the title report and been looked at at that time, because certain stances would have changed about what they had to do to get a property into compliance. And all these rules and regulations that everybody comes up with are squeezing businesses, that they have to bring everything into compliance. And I just applaud you guys for saying about protecting businesses' rights, and that we, and I appreciate that. So I like the Sugar Shack. I go there, too.
Lady back.
Thank you.
Lady back there raised her hand. Would you wish to comment, ma'am?
Boy, I sure didn't want to.
My name is Chris Livingston, and I don't know what the confusion is. We bought the Big Chair Resort on a contract, March 5th, under the name of Rentals and Livingston LLC. If a contract and $80,000 that we've put in to improve the property doesn't count as a change in ownership, I don't know what does, Frank. Your attorney needs to know that. I realize that if I default, he can have it back, but I don't think I'm going to do that. I'm just gonna say one simple thing, which is the basis of why I get up every day and why I live. I live in America where I have the right to pursuit of happiness, and the pursuit of happiness involves making a living. If anybody tried to take that away from me unreasonably, or if I had poisoned somebody, or I had some real health concerns, shame on them, because we still are in the greatest land in this world, and as far as I'm concerned, the greatest state. That's all I got to say. I didn't want to say anything. I just wanted to sit there and do nothing.
Mr. Chairman, I think it may be time we vote on this. What I want to say, there's much, and yes, I go up there and eat, beside the point, totally immaterial.
Or the conflict.
Conflict of interest.
But as is most things, there's much more to it than what appears on the surface. To me, one of, my major hangup is with, I guess, our planning department, and it looks to me like we change horses in midstream again. First, everybody, to bring property into compliance, you have to bring it up to compliance. Now, it's while you can piecemeal it here and there, and sometimes you have to bring it up, and sometimes you don't have to bring it up. Well, we gotta make up our minds which way it is, and to me, that's a much bigger question than whether, we're not gonna close the Sugar Shack, Ken, we know that. And bringing it into compliance, no. How you're bringing it into compliance is you're getting a variance, so you don't have to bring it into compliance. So I think let's just vote on it. We probably all made up our minds.
Any further discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, Patrick Grody from the State's Attorney's Office. I just wanted to let the commission know, and particularly Commissioner Buskrood, the different interpretation of grandfathering was, that came from me, and it was, it would have been maybe two years ago, somewhere in there, because I haven't, I've only been here for about four years. But, and it did come in the context of the racetrack, when they were doing some expansion, and the old planning department practice had been, once you expand a particular non-conforming use, like using the property for a racetrack, I think it was their sign. Their sign didn't conform, and I said, we've got two separate violations. What would be violations if they weren't grandfathered on the property? You do have to bring one into compliance if you're expanding it, but adding seating to the racetrack doesn't expand their sign. So I think they're different, you know, which actually kind of, I mean, that broadened, at least the way Pennington County had treated grandfathering, and helped people not have to go through 15 different changes on their property, because they want to expand a garage that's two feet into the, you know, into the setback. But that was, that was from me, not from the planning department.
And I would have to say, it's Ken's old statement, that one attorney in the town stars to death, and two of them both become rich.
Yes.
I think maybe there's an opportunity for a new profession, a hairsplitter. But anyway, we do have a motion and a second, and I think we have had adequate discussion. Do you want to vote by roll call, or do you?
Yes, please.
Roll call vote, then.
Buskrood?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Alway?
Yes.
Troutland?
I'm gonna go with yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Next item, Three Forks Development and Covington Consulting, and I think Dan has...
The applicant has requested to have this denied without prejudice, so that he could reapply within the next year's time to have it reconsidered. He indicated this fall or this winter in regards to the zip line and the variance for the zip line.
Do we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, to deny the variance via 1305 without prejudice.
Deny without prejudice.
That's right.
And what did you say, when are they gonna come back with it?
Possibly this fall or this early winter. For...
I'm gonna vote against it without setting some kind of time period. I don't want it to say, come back someday and we won't charge you for it.
They have to do it within a year.
Yes, they have to do it within a year.
So if they don't do it within a year, then they gotta...
Then they have to start all over.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm probably gonna go along with this motion, but frankly, the way the citizens in that area have brought forth that they don't want this thing, I think we're sooner or later, we're gonna have to make a decision on that, so that's another one of those, get the hairsplitter out, take care of this.
By that time, you can qualify.
Hope I'm in Alaska by that time.
All right. Any further comment? If not, those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Approve, vote for the carry.
I am C. It's a variance request, 1306, for Chad and Allison Carpenter, Rentner and Associates, as the agents. This is to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to one foot to allow for the construction of a detached garage and unlimited ag zoning district. I did, if the county board approves this, we would recommend that one condition be added. It's located at 7648 Elkhart Road, located off of West Highway 44. Property is currently a 10.888 acre parcel, zone limited ag. It does meet the minimum lot size requirement in that zoning district. There is currently a residence on the property, and there is also onsite wastewater disposal system. As you can see here, the house is located on the very west end of the property. They're requesting to build the garage next to this property line right in here, one foot from that property line. A review of the plat indicates that there is no minor drainage and utility easement, so they would not have to vacate that. Typically, there is a eight-foot minor drainage and utility easement. This plat does not have one. We do have a letter in the file from this property owner who indicated they are not...
Which property owner?
This property owner right in here. They are not against the variance request. Staff has been out there. We do feel they could locate it on the property to meet the required setbacks. There does appear to be adequate area where they could build and still have a 25-foot setback.
Where at?
It does, well, they could build it right next to the house, right in here, and build it over there. They could also build it back in this area over in here. This does drop off very significantly in that area, so it would be difficult to build in this area without building some major roads down to it.
Do you have any pictures up there, Dan? Show the close-ups.
This is the house. The property line is right over in this area in here. You're looking kind of northeast on the property. That is the proposed, the house you can see is over in this area. This property line is in that area right there.
Is that, is that septic tanks right there, or what is that?
I'm not exactly sure. That's the well? Okay. And with a well, you could build right up to it. There's no setback requirements to a well. Next.
Dan, do you have any other pictures of the side where you're saying that this could be put?
Well, they could actually build it right in this area, and this area also. This is looking almost straight east on the property. This is the house over in here. Property line is off to the right in here. That's it? No.
So is the property owner here?
Yes.
I guess the question, Mr. Chair, if I could? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The question, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
The question I'd have for you is, the suggestions that the planning department has indicated on different locations, why won't those work versus where you want to put it?
We had three contractors come and look at the property. We had Clearick Buildings come out, Cousins Construction, and Casey Skiberg. And they all three agreed separately that that would be the best spot without having to do digging and retaining walls, and that'd be the easiest spot without costing a lot of money, basically. Where the trailer was in that other picture on the driveway, that's a, to the right of that is a giant retaining wall, and it's starting to settle. And we've also had people that did the asphalt repainting on that driveway, said that that's settling, and it's starting, like, basically don't put any weight over there, especially a building. So that's why they suggested not to do it where the camper's currently parked. And then the rest of the property back there is really steep and rocky, and lots of trees, and it's just not flat. The flattest part of our property is in our front yard. We don't really want it in our front yard. So the next, for this place from the front yard is right there, and the only neighbors that are even close to it are significantly far away, and that's the ones that said that they don't have any problem with this building there.
And the property then, that the, it's the Frost, I guess, isn't it?
Yeah.
And their house is located on the other end of their property?
Yeah. Our driveway, I want to say that that is, yeah, you can see from the picture, let's see. The, yeah, I mean, it's, it's at least, from our house to the end of the driveway, their house is at least that away from the property line. You can't, yeah, you can't see our house from their house. It's, let's see. Oh, yeah, okay. So this is, this is, let's see, this is our house, and then this is where the property line is, and their house is right here. So that's where the garage is proposed, right here, at the end of their property. Yeah, their property where their actual house is is right there.
You can see on the map here, too. Here's their garage, here's their house.
Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, it looks to me like there's only one person that this could affect. That's the landlord to the left up there that's saying that it doesn't bother them to have this built that close to the property line. I guess we're not hindering anybody, so I don't know what the problem is.
Thanks, talking about this also. Orange County is right now coming up with this idea about 25-foot...
Would you identify yourself, sir?
Pardon me?
Identify yourself.
Oh, Steve. Oh, Steve Rosenberg. And they're thinking about having the ones that face the road, 25 setback, and ones with the 25-foot setback, out in the middle of nowhere, they're maybe five foot, any, whatever they want to do, changes, changing the rules. That was up the last meeting they were talking about.
Thank you. What you wish. Mr. Chair. Yes. I'll just make a motion to get it off a dead center, see where it goes. I'll make a motion to approve the variance as requested by the applicant, the variance 13-06, with the staff's recommendation included. There a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You want a roll call vote on this one?
No.
Not? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Do we have a motion to come out of exec, or Board of Adjustment?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Need for lack of a second?
Oh, second. We liked being in there.
You're going to go home someday, or?
Do we have a motion and a second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The motion to continue D, E, F, and G to the May 21st Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Yeah, that motion essentially...
Wipes it out, yep.
adopts the consent agenda.
Yes, it does.
And we do have a second. And the consent agenda does include all of those items being continued until the 21st. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Regular agenda items, H is the current item.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. On April 16th, I had brought to you three recommendations from the Advisory Group for the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Advisory Group. And then what I'll do is I'll just go one recommendation at a time. Would that be easiest to make a motion on each recommendation? Okay, the first recommendation that they brought was that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners adopts the 2013 Spring Creek Geo Mean Monitoring Plan on at least 18 sites from May 1st to September 30th, 2013, not to exceed 82,000. And I would like to, as staff, make an alternate recommendation to the board based upon some budgetary considerations, that we change that recommendation to at least 16 sites from May 1st to September 30th. Well, actually, it'll be May 8th to September 30th, 2013, not to exceed 74,000.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Once again, my name is George Farabee, and if I understand, the recommendation was 82,000 for monitoring? Is that correct?
The motion is for 75,000, or 74,000.
The memo sheet here says 82, but that's close enough.
I don't always go by the memo, so...
75,000 to sample nitrate, phosphorus, total suspended solids, fecal coliform, and E. coli. As I recall, Spring Creek is impaired for fecal coliform, fecal coliform only, from the headwaters down to Sheridan Lake. So why are we spending money having the lab do four, if you combine fecal coliform and E. coli, and E. coli is the new indicator supposedly, the better indicator, then why are we paying the lab to do five tests when one, one will meet the objective of the TMDL? Now, let me tell you, nitrates are so low, so low that many months, they're non-detectable. At least the gal that does the sampling just before Spring Creek enters in Sheridan Lake, and I have the data with me, and I think I presented it to you folks some, several months ago, the last three years, nitrates is undetectable many months. So why are we having the lab spend that money? Total suspended solids, mud in the water, that wasn't one of the criteria, excuse me, wasn't one of the limiting parameters, impairments, when that study was done by Ph.D. Scott Kenner. Phosphorus, total phosphorus also was not limiting, or was not an impairment. One impairment, fecal coliform. So why are we paying the lab?
Ma'am?
I had asked you, when would be, oh, my name is Julie Mueller, and I had asked you when would be an appropriate time to talk about this, but being as you were going to make a motion on something, I thought, well, maybe I better just say something. I hadn't paid any attention to any of the Spring Creek watershed issues or the Battle Creek watershed issues until I had read the article in the Hill City Prevailor with George, the sign about the waste of taxpayer money. And that concerned me, so I had called my representative, Ken Davis, and we had a nice talk about things. And then I thought, well, I better call this George fellow and ask him about it. And he had encouraged us to go to a meeting in Hermosa, which is another story. But as we had talked more, he invited us to come up and look at what our tax dollars were being spent on. And I just thought, that can't be. Why would we, why would we pay somebody all this money for eco coliform, fecal coliform, excuse me, poop, to be checked out in the creeks? And when we went and we looked, I saw homes that were, it looked $400,000, $500,000, and a couple of years ago, they received $19,800. I've been checking into this now that I'm ticked about it. Us taxpayers paid this land, private landowner money to fix up his problem, which there were no cattle, there were no, no horses, they're probably wild turkeys and deer, of course. But if he has a problem with, I know I'm kind of jumping around, but to my knowledge, the eco coliform is somehow affecting the water, and then there's also erosion of these creeks. Is that correct? Am I jumping around too much? But, okay. When we looked, I thought if, they needed some rocks put in to hold up a creek, which supposedly is full of bacteria, they should pay for it themselves, or the side of the Spring Creek area. Why are we paying for it, and why is it being approved? And my husband and I were talking, and I said, because I don't understand this stuff as much as he does, and he couldn't be here. I said, how can this stuff be so dangerous in the water? I just don't understand it. And he said, it really can't be because the water's cold and any of this bacteria can't survive in cold water. So I guess I don't understand why we're wasting thousands and thousands of dollars doing tests for water when there's, you can't control the animal poop in the water. You never will be able to control it in the water. And when it, and if they're, you know, pooping in the grass, you know, and then the hard water comes down, the rainwater comes down, and it goes into the creek, by the, the grass was, I mean, long and bent over into the creek, and so by the time it would go through all that in the rain, it would be broken down. So I guess I would like you to reconsider. And I also know that there's a couple property owners in addition that have requested $42,897, and I think $40,227, they've requested for help with their eroding creeks and this bacteria problem in the water. They chose to buy property on a creek. That property's worth money. If I own property outside, if I have a problem, I would buy, I would hire somebody with a truck, and I would bring rocks in, and I would put it down myself. Why are we, the taxpayers, footing the bill to landscape these yards? And that's what we're doing. I looked at the two that are on the list for you guys' approval today. Oh, my gosh, there are no animals there other than some deer, which we all have in our yards. And we shouldn't be paying for them to have dirt work done or yard work done so that they can supposedly have safer water. Nobody's getting in this creek water, you can't get in it. And you do see fly fishers every now and then, they have waders on. But I would really like you to reconsider because it's my understanding, there's over 82,000 sitting in front of you guys, ready for us to landscape two more people's property, a Mr. Lowery and a Mr. Ludens in Hill City. And we looked at those properties, there, there is no way that any money, taxpayer money should be appropriated to give to these people for their backyards or their front yards on the second case. But the other thing is, is I understand there's 27 more applicants waiting for our money. And if it's at $40,000 a pop, you're talking way too much money. This is, this, this country is in debt. Why, why are you starting another entitlement program? Who started this program? Who approved this program? And why in the world are you continuing with it? It just doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, again, my name's Bruce Meister, and I, I'm a taxpayer. So are you folks up here. You're all taxpayers, and this is, this is your money and my money that you're spending. And, and I have to agree with the last lady that spoke as far as wasting our tax dollars. Again, or I would be along with her and wish you would reconsider this, spending our tax dollars. Mr. Peterson said that I'm retired. Yes, I am retired. I used to own a business. And a long time ago, I had an old timer tell me, whatever I did in my business, you watch your pennies. You do not waste your pennies. Okay, and then in this case, you guys are wasting our pennies. He told me, don't waste your pennies. The dollars will take care of themselves. Don't waste your pennies. And like I say, in this case, you guys are wasting our pennies. So please reconsider. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more comment if I could. If you continue this process and more people keep applying, where are you going to stop it when you realize the predicament you're in? Because somebody's going to say, well, you did it for my neighbors, why can't you do it for me? And I just want you to know, I, I think you're setting up a precedent that we can't afford. Thank you.
Hello, Stephanie Strong. I echo these folks about, I object to all of the items about Spring Creek because it's a false report, and you have only had one contractor who are related that are putting forth these things. And, you know, the proper role of government, we talked about it at the Constitution rally and mentioned Spring Creek specifically to get the word out there that, you know, the decisions about government and what their role is, it's to protect our rights. It's not, you know, Ronald Reagan did a little speech on the three little pigs, and, you know, it's like, well, I want one, you know, and I want one, and I want something bigger, you know, it just, how far can it go? You know, it's not going to stop, and there's not going to ever be enough money. And these three projects that you're going to do this time for this amount of money with those kinds of tests that are, they're not right. When you have a meeting down at Spring Creek Advisory Board, and you have new board members on there that are not allowed to come into the meeting, and the media is not allowed to come into the meeting, if you have to hide something, there's something wrong with that project. And I just pray that you guys look at this and consider that, and just, I object to all of these projects with Spring Creek. I, I think that you should say, I am not going to give the money anymore, I'm going to defund it. So I thank you for your time.
Any further comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
The second, excuse me, the second recommendation was that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners announce another cost share sign-up with an application deadline of June 3rd, 2013.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, please. I was going to go recommendation, or recommendation by recommendation to do a motion for each.
Well, I'll make a motion that we get the applications at least.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, so you, you want a recommendation, or I mean a...
That we announce another cost share sign-up?
That's the motion.
Yes. With the application deadline of June 3rd, 2013.
Is that what you were saying?
Yes. Do we have a second?
Okay, I'll second.
I have a question, though. You know, in our announcement, it says, "We have Clean Water Act funds available, see the best management practices to reduce fecal coliform bacteria, sediment, and nutrients." I guess, backing up to George, why are we testing, uh, where it is, someplace? Are we testing all the rest of it?
Sure. Actually, it's, I'm not exactly sure on the date, and I apologize, but Sheridan Lake also had a TMDL for TSI, which is a trophy status index, and that has to do basically with nutrient, nutrient loads in the lake. And what it does is it causes basically algal blooms. And so that's basically when we look at the project area, Sheridan Lake is included. So basically, the way that we have looked at the project is what you put into Spring Creek eventually ends up in Sheridan Lake, considering that that's what is the majority of what fills it.
And so nutrients are phosphorus and nitrates.
Sure. And if you look at sediment, and then you look at some of the data, the phosphorus and sediment are correlated. Some of the E. coli, I know there's some studies being done where E. coli is suspended in the sediment also, so that's why we look at sediment. Sediment's actually a very cheap test and a good indicator, so that was part of the reason for doing it.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't know how much money this TMDL cost us, but Ph.D. Scott Kenner's got his name on it, it's not signed. And all it talks about is impairment for fecal coliform. It doesn't address total suspended solids or nitrates or phosphorus. No.
Are you speaking to the motion?
I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to the question that Commissioner Buscaro would ask.
Speak to the motion, if you would.
Commissioner Buscaro would ask the question. I have a chance to rebut it. I'd rebutted it, thank you.
Any further comments or questions on the motion?
Again, I'm not sure if I'm in the right spot or not, but doesn't West River Water, I'm not sure if that's what it's called, Sandy Bishar is part of our group, and, and they're doing a program where it's only like $4 to $5 to do water testing, and it's a volunteer program. So I guess I don't understand why we're committing tax dollars to something that, that a group, the West River Water, if I'm saying it right, West River Water District, is already implementing plans to do a volunteer program at little, very little cost to the taxpayers. So why are we doing double testing?
Any other comments? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the third recommendation was that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners approve two riparian applications, SPC 2012 PC 77, and SPC 2012 PC 94, and one onsite wastewater treatment application, SPC 2012 PC 78, and allows the applications that were not funded to remain pending and to be considered in the next round of applications. not funded to remain pending and to be considered in the next round of applications. And just for reference, SPC 2012 PC 77 was for $42,897. SPC 2012 PC 94 was for $40,229. Those were both riparian projects, and there was one onsite wastewater treatment system project, SPC 2012 PC 78, for $3,500.
I'm going to have to have an explanation of the $42,000 and the $40,000. That's a lot of money.
Sure. And actually, I was not out there on that site, so I, not the person to answer that. Okay. And I can certainly have...
The, the motion you're wanting is to allow these applications to be reconsidered, so would...
No, is to approve those three, and then the ones that weren't recommended by the advisory group to remain basically like on the list.
So we would approve, the motion you're looking for is to approve these three?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering about a motion to continue this, to allow staff to get all of the answers to the questions that you're asking, I think that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I would just, this is not to the motion that I would just inject, and, and I think Jay can confirm, that citizens do not own the stream bank. There's a riparian situation involved, and so the stream and...
Navigable waterways are owned by the state to the high water mark. Non-navigable are owned to the thread of the stream by the landowner. I don't know what Spring Creek was...
It's the navigable water.
Navigable, so.
So I...
Landowners theirs to the stream?
No, high water, up to the high water mark, I believe, is all public.
What do you mean, the high water mark?
No, no. High water mark during a flood stage, or during whatever event, or public loans to that lake. It's all public, it's 40 grand. Outside of that, it's private ownership, and it's a non-navigable stream, the private owner owns up to the thread of the stream, which is like the center of the highway. Mr. Chair, I call a question.
Question has been called. All in favor of the questions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question's called. Now we have a motion and a second. This motion is to continue these, so all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That completes your...
No, actually, item I, or that completes item H, yes. Sorry.
Item I, okay.
So item I is the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan. It's approval of the Forest Service participating agreement. The Forest Service has agreed to help contribute a little over $7,000 to the monitoring program for two of the sites that are actually on their property, which is Palmer Creek, on the upper end of Palmer Creek, and at the entrance into Sheridan Lake, they're at Calumet Road. So I'm just requesting approval of the chairperson's signature on the participating agreement with the Forest Service.
That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Is, is that $7,000 part of the $74,000 that was approved earlier?
Yes, that is part of what's helping fund that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to vote in favor of this, because I think it's time to get all the money we can from the federal government, contrary to my previous position, because it's about going to come to a screeching halt here, any day now, so.
You convinced me I'm going to vote for it, too.
I hate to take federal money, because we got to wean ourselves from that as soon as we can.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item J.
And then, item J, actually, because you continued the recommendation number three, I would ask that this also be continued.
My motion.
Second. Motion, second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to continue item J.
And it'll be continued until you bring it back to us, is that...
It'll be continued until such time that you guys review those other applications and approve them, yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Committee reports.
Mr. Chair, I've had a couple of notices to go to Ellsworth for different functions recently, I believe that's going to be a lot of command changes out there throughout this next couple of months. As I mentioned, in this, not necessarily committee report, but on June 22, we are proceeding with the rededication of the Medal of Honor winner that was interred in the Leeds Cemetery in 1928, that had not been honored with a new flag and a, and a light, and a flag pole, and we're going to take care of that on June 22. The Air Force, the National Guard, numerous veterans groups around the area have been invited to that, and to, to speak, and, and also the governor, and Thune, and Johnson, and Noem, and I think they're going to send representatives, but I don't believe they'll be there themselves. Not too many, too many people known. I think that the Board of Regents did an excellent pick on the lady, Heather Wilson, from, for the new chairman of the, president of the School of Mines. I had the honor to be on a group of citizens that were asked to interview her, along with the Board of Regents, and she was an excellent choice. I think she'll do a fantastic job for the School of Mines. We had two tours recently of the Spring Creek Watershed Program, and had state and federal officials here, and looked those objects that we're, that we're working on for the clean, the 319 Spring Creek Program. That's about all I got.
Anyone else?
Well, I, I attended the Mountain Pine Beetle Collaborative Meeting last week, and it was the, the end of the first year under that collaborative agreement that we adopted, and it's pretty amazing how working together can make a difference. I mean, we, we are, we are making a difference, we've got a, a huge issue out there, but we are beginning to see areas that are actually being protected and saved, and we can't do the whole Black Hills, but we do need to protect what we do have left, and so I, it was a good meeting, and certainly showed a lot of progress, and, and I think Scott's got, he's going to do a review here shortly of what we're doing. He's done some pretty innovative things in, in working with the Forest Service, so I'll let him tell about that.
Thank you. I attended the Weed, Weed and Fest Board Meeting last week. All of the agreements with Highway Department and others are in force, and, and putting together their spray crew for the summer, so I think good things will continue there. Any other comments on committee reports? If not, next is items from the public.
I was just wondering if all of you are planning on going up to look at the sites that we talked about.
I've been there.
I've been there.
Are, are you the one that got the $19,800? And, oh, I, I know what I wanted to ask you. Do you have any taxpayer, or any records of how the money was spent? Who, who, like, got the jobs to do the work? That kind of stuff, so we can see?
And we should have all of those records, and the, and the federal government, and the DNR and peer.
Well, and you, you know, you...
Should have those.
And you did mention a few times, the federal government, we're kind of tired, this, if this is a federal program, maybe this is one we should not accept, because we can't afford it, so.
It's a great idea. The problem with that is, the money's already spent. It's appropriated, it's spent, we spend it, or it goes to someone else and they spend it. That's the problem with the federal government, and, and I would agree with you one heartedly, but...
But you mean, not the applications, not the applicant's money, but the money for testing is already spent?
The money that's been appropriated for the 319 program is basically already spent.
That includes the applicants, who are asking for this stuff?
You're not getting...
I guess I don't know what the 319 program is.
Ma'am, I think what he's trying to say is that the federal government appropriated this money to do this project in the Spring Creek area, and if we turn it back to the federal government, it's already appropriated for this use. What they'll do, just give it to another group in Pennsylvania, and they'll spend it for the same thing. And so people in South Dakota won't benefit from it if we turn it back to the federal government. And there would be nothing I'd like better than to see about half of the one in seven people that are on food stamps and, and things with, to the federal government, be taken off, and I'd be more than happy to vote to give this money back to them.
So why can't we make an issue out of this? Why can't we be a leader in the country, and say, South Dakota's found this misuse of tax? It couldn't hurt to try. I mean, somebody's got to put their, stop, try somewhere to stop spending money, we're broke.
So are you going to fund that for us?
Fund what?
Fund, it will take money to be the leader.
You know, I've got about 430 friends that are in our little, our little political group, and I would bet you that we could touch a lot of people without spending a lot of money, because when you're willing to work for it, and actually put the time in, I don't, I don't think everything should have to cost money. I think time.
Mr. Chair, there's one thing that I appreciate from this young lady, she's trying to solve a problem and kind of come up with an answer at the same time. Most people are just trying to solve a problem with no answers.
Real quickly, riparian, and Jay made a comment about the creek belongs to the public, I think, I think it was Jay, and Spring Creek obviously belongs to, to we, the people. Riparian relating, according to Webster's, relating to, or living, or located on the bank of a natural water course. So obviously, if I'm on the bank, and I think you probably own property on Spring Creek, you knew what you want on the bank, but the creek, the water belongs to us. So I don't think that you or I can go dump rocks in a creek. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public comment period?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel and contractual.
Is there a second? Do we, yeah. Okay, we do have issues, so was there a second to that motion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Out of executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second to come out of executive session. Any further business?
Okay, we voted on the motion to come out of the executive session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I would make a motion to acknowledge the, the hiring of Eric Welch, Witcher, for the position of Director of Public Defender's Office, at a salary of $91,243 per year, with a hire date of May 3, 2013.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any other motions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.